Now I'll call this meeting from Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance tonight and also those who are viewing the meeting on G10 television. To begin with, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our council member Logan Sosa, followed by the invocation. Please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this beautiful day, your blessings on us as the city of Jacksonville and upon us individually. We pray tonight especially for our children, our children and grandchildren who are in the local school system, and we especially pray for those who are not yet available, the vaccine is not available for yet, that your protection would be with them and with all of the students from this COVID pandemic that sinningly will never end. Bless them, Lord, as they have entered a new school year under very adverse circumstances in a challenging environment. Keep them safe and let them have a successful year. We pray for our military who are serving here and around the world, for their anxious families, and as always, we pray for our mayor, and we pray for our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them. In your holy name, amen.
Counsel, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting that's been provided to you. We have also have some several add-ons. Have this consent item number six. I'm not sure exactly what is, you want on that?
Actually, the MOA came in and it wasn't included in the original packet, so we've included it now.
MOA and item six. We're going to add on two agenda, consent agenda items. One is an agreement with Onslow County for the purchase of a records management system and computer-aided dispatch that we talked about at the last workshop, and also the abandonment and easement of at a land application site. You may have got an email the other day that this easement was not anything that was critical to the operation of the plant.
Correct, that's an easement we do not use. We have plenty of road access because of the large land area that we have out there at the land application site. We're doing it for an adjoining property owner that they believe need to be abandoned. We have no objection.
Thank you. So I asked for, to adopt the consent item, well, consent items and the, let's go with the agenda first. I need a motion on the agenda.
Move the agenda?
Yes, a minute.
Second.
Any discussion here and down in favor of Senate, House, and I? All opposed? We'll have our first section of public comment, and I have three, four people that have signed up, and we'll start with Justin Haber, I think that's the last name, at 999 New River Drive.
Justin?
My name is Justin Haber. The hard issue is that there's no, town center's shutting down, but there's not really no places to go. But what we was told that town, that Holiday City and Sandy Run was all, everything was clear. The only thing that they declared that they're not facing, doing is the waiving the fee for the application. You have always so many tenants who are going home, who have no place to go, or don't have the money, or don't have the resources. Most of these places are not even in city range or bus limits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Justin.
Lonnie Chapel, Lucky, Lucky Chappelle. There we go.
How y'all doing today? I live at 2004 South Drive. I've been there 12 years. I don't understand why they want to put the people out there where there's nothing wrong with their places. There's nothing wrong with my place. Matter of fact, the inspector hadn't even came and inspected my place. But the reason that I see it, and I'm gonna keep it 100, I think it's racism, because the majority of the people out there in New River is black, and they want to put us out, and there's nowhere to go, and it don't make no sense. I mean, if there's nothing wrong with your place, why they want to put you out? And it's people that's been out there for so long, 30-some years, like I said, I've been there 12 years, and they want to put you out? Come check out my place, just like yesterday, I seen on Facebook. They put places on Facebook that's been tore down since the first hurricane. They ain't looked into the new places yet that's out there. My place is done, they done redid it and everything. There's nowhere to go, and y'all putting people out in the streets? Come on. But at the end of the day, all y'all going home in y'all places. We ain't got nowhere to go. So I'm just saying, y'all need to check things out before y'all put people in the street. Come check out my place. There's nothing wrong with it. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Hold on just a minute, Mr. Chappelle. Mr. Carter.
I'm gonna have to have the media, very Eastern Greens. I have a mayor, five other people that's on the list that like to speak, but when I went to find and talk to them, I believe there's some folks here, and it sounds like, that are not aware of what I shared with council on Friday evening, and not aware that an agreement has been made between the Town Center apartment complex, and I'd like to maybe address that, and it may help with some of the concerns. First thing is, sir, and to everyone who's listening, the city is tasked by the state of North Carolina with certain statutes and certain city ordinances involving minimum housing. We are tasked that we have to enforce those, and we have to enforce those consistently. Our presence over the last year-plus at Town Center Apartments is because residents called the city, and they said, "These apartments are not being kept to the condition where it's habitable by humans." Our inspectors have been out there on numerous occasions, and they have found that to be true. Clearly, there is an inadequate amount of affordable housing within the city limits of Jacksonville. We're all aware of that. We know, and I won't go over the details because council has heard, and I don't know if anyone's looked at the previous meetings, but the conditions at Town Center Apartments are not conditions that, and many of them, I won't say all, because the ones that are inspected, that are not, should not be habitated by humans. You have feces that are leaking underneath the crawl spaces, and you have all kinds of conditions there. The city staff and the council, to some, through the mayor and the council's guidance, has worked with the owners of the Town Center Apartments, and we have worked so that we do not create a new homeless population. We have worked, and we will continue to work, to ensure that folks that are displaced because these units are not habitable and should not be habitated by people, that they are relocated to other units within the city, if possible, and if not, within the county. We have, through an agreement that was entered into on Friday evening between the manager and the owners of Town Center Apartments, there's been an identification of 67 units that need to be vacated. These 67 units have been inspected and have been found that they should not be habit, people should not be living in them, let's put it real simple. The city has worked with Onslow Community Outreach, and we have them as a point of contact to help anyone that's on this list that has to be vacated, the unit has to be vacated by December 31, 2021. The Onslow Community Outreach has agreed to be the point of contact to help folks find other accommodations. In fact, the city has already given them, through CD funds, $20,000 to help folks find, if they are able to find accommodations and to pay that first month's rent, utility deposits, and any other rental deposits that may be, may be necessary. These are not things that the city council and the management has entered into lightly. These units that were built in the 50s, and if you're aware, of course, the base came in the late 40s and the mid 40s, and their units and their housing has all been pretty much taken down, and new construction has happened there. These units are still standing. Everything has a lifespan. We as individuals have a lifespan, so why wouldn't we expect residences like these to have a lifespan? These units have not been properly, our inspectors would tell you, have not been properly maintained in a lot of different ways, but again, our presence out there was because the residents called us and asked us to come and inspect, and that's where the, we started this investigation, and that's why it led up to this evening. Again, we all work together here, because there's already four, over 400 units that have been vacated just through the work of the Town Center Apartment owners. But if we work together, hopefully, we can, you know, these folks will be, again, moved into other accommodations that are decent for people to live in, and that on this property, hopefully, one day, it won't be this year or whenever, but hopefully, there can be some redevelopment to make decent, affordable housing available. So from everyone's perspective, at the end of the day, whether it's this year, next year, or the year after, or however long it takes, again, it's hoping that everyone can be accommodated. But I wanted everyone to know that there is a list, and I've met with several of you out there this evening in the hallway, and you've asked, "Is my number on the list?", and I've looked, and yes, you're, three people, their number's on the list, and I've asked them then to go back and talk to the Town Center personnel and so forth, but their number being on the list means that by December the 31st, they need to vacate. One of them asked a question, "Well, I have a lease till November. Will I be able to get out of my lease?" The answer is yes. Part of this agreement says that you will be allowed to terminate your lease early, and there will not be a penalty given to you by Town Center Apartment owners. But again, I wanted everybody to know that we have worked hard to do this in a compassionate way so that these persons can be relocated to housing that is decent and affordable for them.
That December 31st deadline only applies to the ones that have been inspected and have been found to be unsuitable.
That's correct.
Right. I think one of the issues with Mr. Chappelle is that he had an issue at one time. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Where you were smelling?
About five, six years ago, now it was water under there, but they done came and they done sucked all the water out, they done did stuff up under it. It's no smell, no water, no mold, no nothing, and nobody hasn't even come, came and inspected my place. And then you gonna tell me I got to go? The only thing you gonna smell in my place is plug-ins, and that's it. It ain't no hazard or nothing, because like I say, they redid my whole place, from the bathroom to the front door. So if y'all talking about putting people out, go check the good apartments first before you put these people in the street.
Well, that's another thing that the agreement says, that we will allow the Town Center folks to move folks from these units that have been inspected and not found to be decent for humans to live in, to move to what we call the less worst units that they have there for some period of time. But ultimately, that's the Town Center decision to make as far as some folks.
Well, what was told to me, and I'm not gonna say who told me, the inspector, he ain't even went out and looked at no place. They asked inspector, "Have you been in any of the units?", he said, "No." So how you gonna inspect the people on place if you ain't been in it? You gonna stand outside and look at the building? Yeah, the buildings, the outside needs doing good, you know, fixed up, but the insides are different.
Let me clarify that, just a second if I can. The way these units are constructed, they have a common crawl space, so if there are four units per building, that entire underneath is one open space. So it certainly is possible that an inspector has not been inside an apartment. I can assure you, though, that every unit that is on that list, the inspectors have been under that unit and have verified the conditions of the fecal material, the plumbing systems, and the floor joists and so forth. I think Mr. Chappelle is correct. There are units that we have not physically been inside the unit, but I can assure you that our inspectors, if that, if there is a unit on that list, it's because they've been under there and have determined the condition.
And that's the 67?
That's the 67.
It's not. I think most of them are Eastwood.
It's a considerable number of Eastwood, yes, sir.
And South Drive. You know, most of the places over there on South Drive, there's nothing wrong with it, you know? But y'all got to look at it, though, man. Y'all got these old people, they got family, and they live out there. They don't have nowhere to go. Y'all gonna put them in the street?
That's certainly not our goal.
You know, come on, y'all got to, y'all got to check things out, you know, and make sure everything is right.
Let me also share this information, which Jacey Jackson gave just a few minutes ago in a, in a prior meeting. We are setting up a central clearinghouse for people to contact, rather than trying to go out and find housing on their own. We've set up a central clearinghouse through Onslow Community Outreach. We've invited anybody who has a rental unit that they, let's say for discussion purposes, you know, Mr. Brown, he owns a unit and he rents it. He's welcome to register that unit with that clearinghouse. That way, people don't have to figure out who are the 10 people that are right around town trying to find a unit. All they have to do, contact Onslow Community Outreach. As of this afternoon, Sandy Run Apartments has 14 four-bedroom units currently available. They have three three-bedroom units currently available. They expect more four-bedroom units to come available within the next two weeks, as well as several two- and three-bedroom units coming available. At Holiday City, we've already had five families relocate from Town Center Apartments to Holiday City, and Holiday City currently has four applications that they're processing. There are also six families are currently housed through the city's Emergency Rental and Utility Assistance Program. So we certainly understand the plight. There's no, there's no easy solution. Saying that nothing is gonna happen would be misleading the public, and it's not in the best interest of you and some of your neighbors. You may feel it's in your personal best interest, but many of those neighbors. This is a process. We just need to all work together, because I can guarantee you that the mayor and council, the last thing they or the management want to do is to put people on the street.
I just want to do the right thing.
But working together, we can see if we can find incremental improvements to solve this.
Yeah, I just want to do the right thing. Just think about the people out there that's disability, you know what I'm saying, old people, and people that's done been out there.
Yes, sir.
Go check their apartments out, you know what I'm saying, like myself. You can come tomorrow and look at mine, and you'll see I ain't lying. But see, I know how it is.
What's your unit number?
2004 South Drive. But see, I look at TV too, and you know how sometime when you tell the people your address and all that, then you tell me nothing wrong with it, the next thing you know, they get somebody to come and sabotage your place, and you be like, "I thought you said there was nothing wrong with your place? You got all this stuff up under your place? Come on now." That's what I'm saying. Do the people right, don't mess them up.
I don't find your number on this list, sir.
Oh, you don't?
Yes, sir.
That's just, I didn't think that would be on.
So that mean I'm good?
I won't say that. That's for you and the management.
But I'm just telling you. It mean on the list for me to be vacated.
What's happening, they gonna go on down that list, and they're gonna call folks that's on that list. That's the 67 that actually have been inspected, to be proven not to be suitable. But like you said, all of them are, they might move some folks, they will move some folks around in the other apartments that are more suitable, but it's still gonna be up, you gotta deal with it, the owners and the property managers when it comes to that.
Okay. Well, still, like I say, check out all the apartments, check out the people, help them out. All right? And y'all have a nice day.
Thank you, sir.
Corinne Parker.
Corinne Parker?
Yeah.
Everyone in Town Center. And my, I just want to know, I got some questions, and I would like some answers. Why are y'all doing that to us now? Because y'all have been knowing years that Town Center have been broke down, no good, but all of a sudden now, you want to put the people out? Where are we got to go? We don't have nowhere to go. We are human beings. This is our home, our life that y'all are living with. We're no dogs. We're not to make you throw aside and stumble over. We have feelings, and Town Center have been our home some of our whole lifetime. Now, where are we looking forward to go? Everywhere we go, nobody want to take us. Section 8 people, nobody want to take us. So what we supposed to do? Stay out in the cornfields, stay out in the woods, stay in the streets, or in the by-doors, or anybody else? We are human beings, we are somebody. We have a mother, we belong to somebody, we belong to God. We are God's children. Y'all might not think so, but we are God's children, and I say, and I'm gonna say something else. If your mother, your father, your sister, your grandma, or your granddaddy stayed in New River, would you throw them out in the streets like you're trying to do us? I don't think so. I don't think you would do it. So y'all need to give us some answers, because we need to know why you're doing what you're doing to us. We deserve that much. Why you want us to be homeless, on the street, thrown out there, while it over? Our mess thrown out the door, door locked on us? That's what you want us to, want us, people to do to us? It won't happen. That might be what you thinking, but it ain't gonna happen, because bad God ain't gonna let it happen. We got, I serve a God that sit high and look low. He sees everything y'all trying to do to us, and he gonna pay you. A payday is coming. Now you can bank on it. And I'll have nothing else to say. I leave that with you.
Is there any way at some point that maybe I could do? For Town Hall to kind of give further explanation of some of the things we had talked about?
Sir, we'll be happy to see what you can set up.
Okay. I think that'll be best.
Dr. Woodruff and Mr. Carter, I have a question to ask both of you gentlemen. When the MOU was being set up with Town Center, how many apartments are right now deemed inhabitable?
There's 67 that they have agreed with the city's inspections department that are on the list that I forwarded to you that are, should not be habit, people should not be living in.
My next question.
Let me answer that a little differently. The list that Mr. Carter's talking about is the list of units that are currently occupied. There are 431 units that are unoccupied, so I'm gonna just use simple math. Roughly 490 to 500 units between the 431 that we know are vacant at our request and direction, and the roughly 67 to 70 additional units that we believe need to be vacated by December 31st. Now, there may be more units than that that actually need to be vacated. Remember, there are 694 total units. So we're not saying that there are roughly 200 that are gonna be fine for people to live in. We have stopped our inspections except where we're requested to come and do additional inspections. We understand very clearly the plight that this lady and others are facing. The last thing you or us want to do is put them on the street, but I will also tell you, why are we doing it? Exactly the reason why the lady spoke. These units are past their livability standards. This is not about, well, they need to be painted. These are about units that have failing sewer systems, where every building that we have said, "No more, people are not gonna live in there anymore," is because the floor joists, the under portions of the units, they are soaked with fecal material, and they have mold and mildew. We're doing it to try to protect the health of these people. Now, at the end of the day, I can't guarantee that some people won't wind up homeless. What I can say to you, though, is this is a phased program. What the mayor announced and what the staff agreed to this past Friday is a phasing. It did not require the rest of the 300 plus or minus units to be vacated all at one time. So it is a phased approach to try to give people an opportunity to move. I will say to you, if you don't want to move, then you're gonna wind up in a difficult place. There, as I said just a minute ago, there are currently 20, 25 units that we've identified that people can move to, and the city has set up a fund to actually help them pay their down payment and their utility payment. People have to realize, though, when something is worn out, whether you've lived there your whole life or not, you need to face the reality that we have to move on. And sometimes, that's not a pleasant reality. Now, ma'am, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So my next question is going to be, for these 67, 70 inhabitable units, have Town Center done their due diligence and not charged these residents for living in a place that's not inhabitable?
I do not have the answer to that.
Are Town Center gonna give these residents their money back for living in, in an apartment that's inhabitable?
I'm sure that they're not staying there unless they probably are paying some rent. However, I will read from the agreement that says that "They agree to release any occupant who has a current valid lease that is not yet expired without any penalty." So that, I spoke to a lady, lady earlier, said, "My lease ends in November." She says, "Can I get out early?" I said, "The agreement says that you are able to terminate your lease without a penalty."
Okay. So even if the units are inhabitable and Town Center is letting these individuals break their lease early, my question is, whip Town Center still needs to be held accountable, so why are they still charging individuals rent for a place that's inhabitable?
Because...
At what point, okay, because my next question, is there a North Carolina general statute that says anything when it comes to inhabitable housing in the state of North Carolina that a landlord cannot charge you for price of something that you cannot live in, particularly if there's evidence to show that it's inhabitable?
Again, as you heard me say earlier, the, we have worked with the landlord. The landlord is letting these folks move from terrible units to what we have termed...
But it's terrible because of the landlord's fault and not that of the residents?
They have certainly not kept these units up, and that's their choice. If they don't want to keep them up, they could theoretically, if these folks are on month-to-month lease, they could go file eviction papers against anybody who's on a month-to-month lease down there. What we have tried to do... What we have tried to do with the landlord is to do this in some kind of phased way so that you don't have two hundred of whatever people put out at one time through an eviction proceeding. So again, the landlord, we are working together to make this in a phased way, going from a unit that, let's say, you put your foot and it goes through the floor, and this, like Richard's described, the fecal material and so forth. You know, from that unit to one that's still bad, and again, but again, trying to get these folks in something that's better than what they're in today. Because like I said, our presence out there was because we got calls.
Right.
And we have to respond under the law. We have to follow the state minimum building code. Now, the landlord can, again, like I say, they can take additional action to, and again, we've been told that the majority of these folks are on month-to-month leases. They can actually terminate those immediately and say, "You need to get out in thirty days." But they haven't done that. They have worked with us to try to have, again, a gradual movement so that we, working with our partners, can find decent accommodations for these folks.
I guess, no. I know what my concern is. My concern is, is that when you have the financial resources and something happens to your house, locating from one area to another may not be difficult. But if you are living in Town Center and you are on a fixed income, or you're living in Town Center because you're on a fixed income and you are relying on the transportation system. If you are living in Town Center and you're on a fixed income, and you're relying on the bus transportation center, and it's a central location for you to be near family and friends, or to eatery restaurants, or close to a convenience store, because you may not be able to get to a local grocery store that easy. I hear everything that you and Dr. Woodruff are doing, and I know that when you stood for the city, you were giving Town Center the opportunity to come with resolutions for these citizens. My concern is that although both of you gentlemen talked about it's the law of North Carolina that cannot allow us to have our citizens living in horrible, dilapidated condition. My frustration is where it's the same law that tells Town Center as a landlord, "You get a slap on the wrist, and you get to continue to collect money from individuals who can't fight for themselves and put them and make them live in horrible conditions, and you're not held accountable."
Amen.
How is that possible? Because some of these citizens, unfortunately, do not have the same resources we have. If any of us, if our house burned down tonight, we have homeowners insurance. We can live in a hotel, or we can go and live with a family member. But when your resources are limited, when there isn't much money to go around, and you're faced with a possibility of homelessness, and anything else in life you might be dealing with, a recent death of your husband, chronic illnesses, mental health illnesses, all of those psychological and human traumas starts to stir up in individuals. My concern is that Town Center is not being held accountable for the problem they created. Is there nothing that we can do for these individuals? Is there no attorney listening to this conversation that can come out and help these individuals see what ramifications they can do legally against Town Center because of nothing more? We are grateful that the city has designated CBG funds, but I would like to see Town Center put these individuals somewhere for over a year and pay their rent so they don't have to deal with this frustration.
Amen. Amen. Amen.
Right back there. I don't know if they would take it, but someone should be listening. This is real. And when it doesn't affect you, you can close a blind eye to say, "This doesn't affect me." But it's when it's your DNA, when it's your skin that's in the game, each one of us takes a different look. And this is no different. This is no different.
And let me say.
All of these res, and even if we put them in Sandy Run, or even if we put them, where else?
Holiday City.
Holiday City, that still is not gonna be enough room. You're still gonna have some individuals that still are affected, that's gonna be totally uprooted for their community. What if they have children? Now, the children have to be uprooted from Clyde Irvin now to go to another school across the city, across the boundaries. Uprooting someone from their roots isn't that easy. It's more complicated than what you think it is. And it's appalling and the shame that Town Center is not at least here to hear the grievances and to come better with the resolution, other than what's written on the piece of paper to say, "We'll work with you." Put your money where your mouth is. Give these residents their money back and let them go and find a place while additionally, punitive damages. Why don't you pay their year's rent to go somewhere where they can live stress-free for at least a year until they can get themselves together?
That's being affected by this is a cross-section. You have people that were formerly homeless out there. You have active-duty component that's out there. You have veterans that's out there. You have young people, you have old people, it's all kinds of people that's out there. It's a, it is a bad situation. It's terrible. I know more pressure is gonna have to be put back on the ownership, as Dr. Washington says. And we're gonna continue to work with you.
And I hope pretty soon.
Oh, you're gonna, we're gonna continue to work with you. But, you know, some of those issues could go from unethical to illegal, but it's gonna take an outside lawyer to determine that type of stuff. You to see me.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for coming, Ms. Parker.
And Mr. Euring.
Is there a Mr. Euring that signed up? Euring?
Euring.
If you would, please give your name and address for the clerk.
Yes, sir. My name is M. Kennedy Euring Senior, 117 King George Court. First, I would like to say thank you to Councilman Brian and Dr. Washington for taking up this fight for the tenants of New River. I, I do not live in New River, but I'm a citizen of this city. And I work with many organizations that help our homeless, our hungry, our underrepresented. And the way this situation in New River was handled, at best, was a poorly thought-out endeavor that took no consideration for the fact that it houses a great portion of our underserved. We're in a pandemic. We've already been ravaged by Florence. That these folks, a lot of them make minimum wage. That we are on the verge of an election. We're currently working on redistricting the city. And we're talking about moving voters and citizens and residents. In the middle of all this, it's quite irresponsible. At the very least, there needs to be accountability for those who treat housing like it's not a basic, decent, human right. And we need an effective and active fair housing officer or authority to make sure that this type of irresponsibility and injustice does not happen again. Not here in Jacksonville, not in Onslow County. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Euring.
Thank you.
Alicia Benson.
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 Is there a Ms. Benson who wants to speak? Ms. Benson?
Good afternoon. I would like to say that you have heard all the tenants just about. There's still more tenants to come. I do agree with you, Ms. Washington. We have kids. Y'all taking our kids from their school that they know. What they gonna do? They get to new school, they gonna fail, and then their education gonna go down. And then, what about tent cities? Like you said, Holiday City is full. There's no openings in Sandy Run. So now you're gonna have a lot of people living in tents and stuff. And I'm hearing that, and I can back it up, that there's like twenty thousand dollars for people to move within the city. And that's supposed to pay for a security deposit, first month's rent, and utilities. Okay, so what about the people that has to relocate southwest, outside of the city limits? Is there a way that they can have grants to turn on their utilities? Pay for application fee? Cause a lot of people around here are losing money that they don't have to lose on application fees. I know a couple of people that actually had, went through the process, and then at the end got told they got denied. So what about them? And then also, what about the people that, like they said, they don't have help? They live here, they're disabled, there's elderly. They don't have nobody to help them move. How they gonna just up and move out of an apartment? They can't do it. And then, y'all known about this probably for years. Why now? Why? All of a sudden, y'all wanna come and tear down? Have y'all thought about what our lives will be like? Is there a place for us? There's no place. We all have checks. There's nothing. A lot of us is being forced to buy things that, for instance, I'm being forced to buy a trailer. I've never lived in a trailer. The trailer that I'm supposed to be getting is outside city limits. How are y'all gonna help me and my family as far as turn on our utilities? We don't have funds for that. And then there's other families as well that don't have funds. If y'all really wanna help us, like you said, Town Center needs to be here. They do. They hold accountable too, just like the city holds accountable. Every once in a while, I do know that they're supposed to do inspections. And then I know when the sewer thing happened, what happened to the inspections after that? Y'all said y'all inspected X amount of numbers of apartments. Y'all came to one apartment and the lady waited for weeks. Nobody never showed up. What about hers? But she got, her apartment got deemed unsafe. But there was not an inspector at her apartment that day. And then on top of that, not only that, it's like, y'all not realizing. Y'all not realizing. Y'all gave us to December thirty-first, give us to June so our kids can be safe. So our kids don't have to go through all this. My time is up.
Ms. Benson, would you please tell the clerk your address for the record?
My address is 378 Eastwood Drive.
And let me address a couple of points.
Please do.
Number one, the twenty thousand dollars was set up by the city for in-city moves. There's also been twenty thousand dollars set up by the Onslow Strong Disaster Recovery Alliance. That's the Onslow Strong Disaster Recovery Alliance. They're partner with Onslow Community Outreach, and they also have twenty thousand dollars for the same assistance that the city money is set up for. The difference is, the city money can only be spent inside the city. This other money can be spent for people moving outside the city. Also like to remind the young lady, she probably did not hear before, currently Sandy Run has three three-bedroom apartments and twelve four-bedroom apartments available. That's as of this afternoon. So anyone who believes Sandy Run has no role that they can play here, they need to go talk to the management at Sandy Run.
Going back to that Town Hall meeting, I would like for you to reach out to the owners. Cause the people feel like they're being squeezed in between the city and the owner. And if they will to stand forward and actually communicate what's been going on so they can be held accountable by the people. You know, because it's, it's like, the city, like you said, people called the city and we had to act. But the reality, you have this other party over here, which is the property management, and also the ownership that has not been held accountable like they need to be.
I want the public, though, to make sure they understand. Holding accountable is not something that the city
Right.
has the authority. We do not have the authority to hold the property owner accountable.
I didn't say we.
No, I know. And I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, they need to decide what private legal services and what role they want to take. But I, I wanna make sure, I know you and Dr. Washington know this, but I wanna make sure the folks in the atrium know this. What the city has the authority to enforce are the city ordinances. And that's what we are enforcing.
Right.
I will also say, I understand, you know, when the ladies ask, "Why now? Why wasn't it last year?" Well, there comes a point where too many promises have been given and broken, and the city is not going to allow, I as the manager am not going to allow promises to continue to go unbroken when it comes to Sandy Run Apartments. And if that means. What did I say?
Sandy Run.
Erase that. Okay. It's been called so many things, New River Apartments or whatever. But understand the plight. The important thing is, right now, we have a list of sixty-seven people that we have an additional roughly ninety days for them to relocate. We are finding places that they need to be working to move to. I wanna make sure everybody understands. This is not going to magically end. This is not going to magically end. At the end of the day, whichever day that day is, everyone on that sixty-seven list will have to move out.
And Dr. Woodruff, is it also a fair assessment to say to the residents that, they may seem like everything is happening now, but when we take into account if we go back as far as 2016 when we had Hurricane Michael, and then two years later when we had Hurricane Florence, and then we were, we are still dealing with COVID-19. I believe it's a fair assessment to say that with many catastrophic things that occurred in Onslow County, the issues that were being addressed or identified with Town Center, because there were so many other pressing factors, and that's not to say that the resident's complaints was not important. Please, please don't walk away and think that I'm, I'm saying that. What I'm saying is that when you're dealing with two catastrophic hurricanes that hit this area and you're dealing with the pandemic, some of this process was slowed down. And now that things are being addressed, and it's almost like the domino effect, when the inspectors went out and they saw this, and they saw this, and they were listening to the complaints and doing the investigation, it was almost like opening Pandora's box.
I'm gonna go back to what I said earlier, though. And like I said, I understand where we stand. But also, if there was some way that we could get into a room with that ownership or the property management, I think it would, it would make the people feel better. Cause right now, we look like we the bad guys.
Well, you know, obviously we are, in the fact that we are the ones saying these units must be vacated.
Right, but we know Tarantino, I think they've been there four or five years, maybe. They didn't do anything they needed to do. as the city, somewhere in between, you could find where this thing went wrong, but like I said, when, when the city, someone calls the city, the city is forced to act. And then as they do inspect, the, the ones that they did inspect, and I, Eastwood seems like to be the worst of the, of all of them, um, that's what caused us to action. But I would like to see the opportunity for you guys to stand in front of the ownership. So, and also, think about representation. We can't represent, represent you legally, but there might be someone you can communicate with and find out if you have a case here.
Am I allowed to say something real quick?
Go ahead.
I would like to sit down with the ownership of Tarantino Properties. I would also like to sit down with somebody from the city and somebody from the county. We have to come up with agreement. We have to. Right now, our main thing is our kids. That goes to Clyde Irvin, a lot of people don't have transportation, so a lot of people, that's where everybody's worries is about, their kids, where are they gonna live? Clyde Irvin kids are going to school stressed out. Our kids shouldn't have to be stressing out about where they gonna live, they have somewhere to live. Is it the best? No, it's not, but it's a place. If we could move within the property itself, that would ease a lot of minds. Just think about that. Thank you.
Let me ask you one more question. Do you have a tenants' association?
I sure do.
So you have representatives, you know, a few representatives that could come before a group to represent all the rest of the tenants, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
So maybe we could plan a meeting in, in that manner, so it won't have to be all of the tenants. We could try, correct?
We can try.
And I'm willing to leave my contact information as well to anybody that wants it to get in touch, because like I said, if we can get some of, if we can maneuver within the property itself, that'd ease a lot of tenants' minds. And if we can communicate and stop doing this silence, stop doing it behind our backs, and don't get me wrong, I'm getting on Tarantino as well, because we didn't know nothing until we saw those signs go on them doors. And then next thing we know, we get letters in the mail. I don't know about you, but I don't like surprises like that. My kid's not gonna have a Christmas. I'm not gonna have a birthday, and I'll be 34 December 29th. I refuse to be put on the streets on my birthday, and what am I gonna do about my kids' Christmas gifts? Thank you.
Back in, Ms. Benson. Okay. We still have, um, time people left to speak, so if you can limit the comments so they can get through this and to the end, uh, make, be able to expedite things a little bit. Modetta Hardy.
Hardy, sir?
Yes. I believe that's right. It's either an R and an N.
Hello. Is this the correct place?
Yes, ma'am, it is. If you would, please state your name and address for the clerk.
Excuse me. Yes, my name is Modetta Hardy, I live at 137 New River Drive. Um, my dad served in the Corps. I was born on the June. I am almost 47 years old, I just relocated back here to Jacksonville, uh, three years ago. Um, I always came back here in the summers and stuff, because after my dad got the Corps, we moved upstate, I'll speed this up. Out of everywhere in North Carolina, I knew New River, because my grandma and I was there. We have a military family, so I was always close to Lejeune. Um, I came here, I didn't know much, I don't drive, um, so I moved to New River, and it, I already knew the apartments were old, and, you know, even my family that's still there told me, but it was supposed to be a jumpstart for me, so I'm gonna get to my point. It was supposed to get, get me started, and then I can build myself and make North Carolina my home again. I, I had no problem getting work here and all, but thanks to New River, I lost a great job that I liked, that I never even made that much money, it may not be a lot to y'all, but I made more money than I even made in Maryland DC and Virginia, where I had grew up in, um. I remember walking past here crying on the phone with you guys, on the phone with whoever. I got to run around, because I had a sewage problem for three months, November, December, and, 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 and they moved me finally in January. I don't know this place, and I called everyone, I came here, my name is on the signature there, probably November, you know, it started November 11th, they moved in a whole family, like a family in the whole row, and I was at the end of the row. I've never smelled something so outrageous before in my life, I'm still trying to get myself scanned medically to make sure that there's nothing going on with me, I was terrified, I have diaries full, I have nightmares. So I hold all of y'all accountable, I don't mean any disrespect to anybody, but I'm in a place that I don't know, a lot of my family doesn't live here anymore. I'm really scared, I've been really sick, my boyfriend, my friends, everyone came over, experienced that, it was really bad. And I just wanna know if there's any way to hold these people accountable, I don't want to worry about nobody's money or nothing, help us get a lawyer, because I have been trying and trying, and I lost a decent job. I just started working again, and it requires that I live in Jacksonville, and I'm about to lose my, my job again, because nowhere in Jacksonville has, I've literally been working almost a week, and I can't tell you what it feels like to be broke, and not know what you're gonna eat, and have a sign on your door that says you have to go, you know? Um, I, I don't know what to say, I work, I've worked since I was 14, so please don't discriminate against us in New River. My uncle served from age 17, 18 till retirement, he's there disabled now, he couldn't make it down here. They moved him from Robertson Drive over to New River Drive, I live across the street from him, and I try to take care of him as best as I can. It, it's really heart wrenching, so I know all of y'all have families, I'm not with the excuses, I'm not with the disrespect or anything, my time is up. I'm just asking y'all to please dig into your hearts, and I appreciate each and every one of you that has dug into their heart. Um, Ms. Angela Washington, thank you so much, I was outside watching. Anybody, anybody that can please plead, if I can get on the news and beg, I just want lawyer. New River has to be, Tarantino, whatever, they have to be accountable. I really, I'm putting out my own little money to go to the doctors and such, to make sure that I'm okay, they had me living on top of sewage. Literally, I've never, you can probably still walk past there and it still smells like that. They opened the pipes up, I lived at the end unit, they opened the pipes up from every unit, and told me that was the only thing they could do. And I lost my job, because before opening the pipes up, four out of five days a week, I was wo, working at home for one of the newer call centers, I think it's one of the newest out here, not, not the one in New River Shopping Center. And I was, and I, I really enjoyed that job, it was, I really enjoyed it, and, you know, I would sign on in the morning, start working, within an hour, I hear whoosh, smell smacks me in the face, and I have to call the rent office, and they come out, and they have this loud snaking machine, where they're at the top of my roof, snaking it out for three hours, this is four out of five days out of a week, and I have it recorded, I had, I've been through unemployment, got denied. I got all of the information, I'll give you all, over and over and over again, if I could pull out books, diaries, unemployment documents, New River documents, this is what they took me through, I need them to be accountable. And it hurt me, I don't know Jacksonville well, but I came down here and I couldn't find, my name is on one of y'all's sign-ins, she's maybe two or three, I walked up and down here crying as a grown woman, pushing, I'm almost 50, really, I've grown children in college, and, and I couldn't get any help when that sewage issue happened, and then I, now y'all wanna throw us out. Some people been dealing with this, please hold these people accountable. I, I feel really bad for the neighbors who have been there forever, but I'm with you guys, if they can't gut them out and redo them all, after what I've been through, I don't recommend that anybody live on a New River. I mean, what he said, I think it was, I'm not sure, I don't wanna disrespect anyone, but I heard, uh, I'm not familiar, but I heard him say, um, that, uh, this gentleman said that it's reeked in fecal matter, I think it was, and, and mold and such, yes, it is, and next door to me, there's a three-bedroom apartment that the girl moved out because it's full of mold, and they moved her across the street. I'm still breathing that mold in through my vents and such, nobody did anything about the mold, you know, but I, I have to leave, there's nowhere to go, I don't have a family, my children are in school, I finally got to move back home and live my life, and there's no one bedrooms around here, there's no one bedroom, so I understand they have threes and fours, and I appreciate that for the families that need it, I don't need that, I can't get a one bedroom in Sandy Run, I've called them and called them and called them. So I'm just begging for your help, and that's all I have to say, please, if y'all can help us to get this done legally, I need them accountable. I'm not greedy for money, they shouldn't have been charging me rent, I shouldn't have paid my rent this month. I don't want the money, but they gonna pay, they need to. I'll get on the news, I'll go in the online, whatever, and beg for a lawyer, but I'm sure that with, you know, who y'all are, I'm sure that y'all know lawyers or somewhere, I'm not trying to pass the, you know, but please help us if you can, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Dora, Dorothea Haber.
Abel.
Who? Yeah. Hey.
Is Abel out here? Dorothea Abel?
Haber.
Haber.
Good evening, City Council. Ms. Washington, I listened to everything you said outside, and I applaud you. Um, I just wanna say, I wanna know what's gonna happen to my apartment, I just lost my mom three months ago, okay? Um, but I wanna know what's gonna happen to my apartment, they saying everything, because my door's already marked unsafe. Where do you plan on putting all these people, there's 296 families that you have to find housing for? What are y'all gonna do? Because Sandy Run and, um, Holiday City, they have nothing available anymore. Where else are you gonna find housing for all these people? Or you're gonna put us in the streets? I would like to know an answer, if I can have one.
I don't have an answer for you, ma'am. What I can tell you is that the city has a responsibility to make sure that where you live is safe and decent. I cannot tell you where you're going. What I can tell you, though, is that we are working to try to phase and gradually move people out. Over the last three weeks, I can tell you that there have been about 30 folks who have relocated from the Town Center Apartments, but I cannot tell you where you're gonna wind up.
But they can afford it, that's the problem. My family's on a fixed income, okay? It's not easy to find anything, we've been looking up online and everything else, there is nothing in our price range.
I, I understand that.
So I don't know where you guys are gonna just put all us out in the street like we're a piece of garbage, and I don't appreciate that.
Well, I can assure you that I nor this City Council nor any staff member consider you to be garbage. We consider you to be human beings, that's the reason why we're taking the incremental steps to try to phase this out as easily and as reasonably as possible. But at the end of the day, you just heard the testimony from the former woman, she's living, and you're probably living in a unit that is completely inundated with material that is not good for your health. But again, I don't have an answer for you, I, I understand your plight, yes, I do live in a nice place, I'm fortunate, I understand that, I understand that you have a problem.
So I guess we can all buy tents and live on your front lawn, because that's where, where we're gonna head into if we go in the streets.
Okay, we don't need to be argumentative in here, okay? What, what is your address, by the way?
999 New River Drive.
Let me say this, ma'am, when people are going through things, we have to be careful with how we respond to things.
Well, we're not gonna be argumentative.
Well, we gotta be careful on how we respond to things, because we gotta take their feelings into consideration. I know there's no intentions to be argumentative, but when you, you, you know, you're dealing with a homeless situation, people, of course, people are gonna be upset, so we gotta be careful, don't nobody wanna hear that, you know, how other people are living at that point, we just gotta be careful.
She might not have heard that the Onslow Community Outreach is the point of contact for the tenants to go to, and they will do everything they can, and that's a central point of contact, to work with her to find other accommodations, maybe she didn't hear that comment earlier.
I heard that comment earlier, but they telling us the same thing, even, um, Trillium, they say they have no funds for anybody either. So I don't know where my family's gonna go. If we wanna live out in the street, I just wonder where are we gonna go? I don't have my family here anymore, being that I lost my mom. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Haber. I seen they're same family. Please give your name and address to the clerk.
My first name is Scott Haber, my first name is Scott, my last name is Haber, H-A-B as in boy, E-R, I live at 999 New River Drive, and I just recently found out, and I'm addressing this to you, Mr. Woodruff, that I am one on that list to be out on December 31st. So I'm gonna piggyback up off of what my wife said, where are we supposed to go? There is nothing inside Jacksonville that is available. You wanna throw people out to the streets and to the wolves, like we're a piece of dirt, and we're not. We're human beings, you have the luxury of going home to a nice home every night, laying down in bed with your wife in your 50 to 60 million dollar home. What do we do? We're living where we're living, because that's the only place that we can live. And if you don't have a heart and you don't have a soul, I feel sorry for you, because when the day of reckoning does come, you're gonna face God, and God is gonna judge you. And you know what? You are not going to heaven. I hate to tell you where you're going, you're going to hell if you don't, if you don't step up and turn this around. And Mr. Mayor, that goes for you too, because you know what? You're also held accountable. Everybody's known about this for Town Center for over 15 years, you now wait until we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're in the middle of hurricane season, holidays are coming up, where do you expect 100 or over 296 people to go? There is nothing. Their Holiday City has nothing, Sandy Run has nothing. Only thing that Holiday City and Sandy Run are doing are waiving application fees, they are not waiving background checks, they are not raving, raising credit checks. So what do people do that can't pass the credit check? What do people do that can't pass the background check? I would like an answer, and I'm not gonna leave so I get an answer, and you can sit there and look at me with your evil little look and whatever else. You were quiet last month, nobody attacked you last month, because nobody knew exactly who you were. And I met you last month when you came out and gave me a pound, and you looked me straight in my face, I didn't know who you were, so I gave you that pound, but you know what? Now I regret it. Now I regret that I gave you that pound. And now, I'm gonna let you know, sir, and Mr. City Attorney, you're not innocent either, I regret ever meeting you. And I hope, at your day of reckoning, I hope God does forgive you, but I know for a fact, God is not. And I'll tell you something, I appreciate what you said, Brian, I appreciate everything that you've done up to this point, but I'm gonna tell you right now, you coming to put me out of my home on December 31st, you better bring the SWAT team, you better bring the Secret Service. We're in the middle of hurricane season. Holidays are coming up. Where do you expect a hundred or over two-hundred-and-ninety-six people to go? There is nothing. Holiday City has nothing. Sandy Run has nothing. Only thing that Holiday City and Sandy Run are doing are waiving application fees. They are not waiving background checks. They are not raising credit checks. So what do people do that can't pass the credit check? What do people do that can't pass the background check? I would like an answer and I'm not going to leave so I get an answer. And you can sit there and look at me with your evil little look and whatever else. You were quiet last month. Nobody attacked you last month because nobody knew exactly who you were. And I met you last month when you came out and gave me a pound and you looked me straight in my face. I didn't know who you were, so I gave you that pound. But you know what? Now I regret it. Now I regret that I gave you that pound. And now, I'm going to let you know, sir, and, Mr. City Attorney, you're not innocent either. I regret ever meeting you. And I hope, at your day of reckoning, I hope God does forgive you, but I know for a fact, God is not. And I'll tell you something. I appreciate what you said. Brian, I appreciate everything that you've done up to this point, but I'm going to tell you right now, you coming to put me out of my home on December thirty-first, you better bring the SWAT team, you better bring the Secret Service, you better bring every law enforcement that you can through my door because I am not leaving my home peacefully. I will go kicking, I will go screaming, and I will go raise hell. I hope you got this through your head and I hope you seriously think after this meeting, you go home and take a good look at yourselves in the mirror and put yourselves in our position. Because you know what? You don't have a heart, you don't have a heart, and, Mr. Mayor, you don't have a heart. So you know what? Y'all can sit there with your glorious little smiles and whatever else, but I'm going to say this. Every single resident in Town Center Apartments is not going nowhere without a fight. So I hope y'all have enough law enforcement to come out and evict over two-hundred-and-ninety-six people because we're not going. You ever heard of the Million Man March? Well, this is the Town Center March. And I'll take it as far as Governor Roy Cooper's desk. I'll take it as far as Joe Biden. And I don't like Joe Biden, but I will take it as far as him. I am willing to fight this right beside my residents and my family because Town Center is my family. Any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Paulette Haber. Paul. Paulette Haber.
Paulette Haber.
Haber, Haber.
Paulette. Hey, what? Paul Haber.
That's my mom. Can I come in for a hug? No, she's fine. She's fine.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. That was my son. I live in Meadow Elks. I have two children, the boys and a daughter-in-law, that live there. They do not have anywhere to go. My apartment is just for disabilities and stuff and I just have one room and they can't stay with me. And I'm really worried about all those other people too because I know what it's like to be homeless and it's not fun. And it's not fun not to have a place to live. And you are going to throw them out. It's almost the holidays. There's a hurricane. We have the virus. You're going to throw them out on Christmas Eve. Why? Why can't you find them a place to live? I mean, there's money here. We're America. Where is your money? Brian Jackson, I heard you, and Angela, Dr. Angela Washington. I really respect so far what you've been saying. But yous have a really nice cushion house. Most of them don't. The children are our next generation. What's going to happen to them? They're not going to have a place to live, an education. They're going to really resent a lot of things. And you want them to vote for you? They won't if they remember all of this. Why would they vote for people? You know? This is leaving a impact on everybody. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. People knew, from what I know, about this problem for fifteen years. Why wasn't it corrected? Like, Dr. Angela Washington said, why aren't the people that caused this here? They should be sued. They should be fixing all their mess. Brian H. Jackson said that, you know? Try, I'm not much into politics, but what I see, there's elderly, disabled, like I said, and the next generation. That's real important. People didn't work their whole lives to be thrown out or working their best to support their family and this is not fair to them. Any of them. We're human beings. We deserve a place to live, a place that's fair, clean and decent.
You're right, Ms. Haber.
And I'm talking from sixty-one years of experience.
Thank you for what you said.
I please, I hope you do the best what's right for them out there. They need all the support and help they could get.
Stacy Clark. Stacy Clark. Stacy Clark. Stacy Clark. Clark, Stacy. He's not here, man. Next. Wait, I'm sorry.
I think some of the people are in the backseat of her car.
Hello, how you doing?
Ms. Clark, if you will, please give your name and address to the clerk.
I'm Stacy Clark. I stay at two-nine-two New River Drive. So I've been in New River about two and a half years because of Florence happened. I had to move at the house I was renting because the house got messed up and the property, they sold it. So I had to move to New River. The only reason how I got into New River is because I got Section Eight. I had a background, I was like ten years old, but they wouldn't let me in only because I had Section Eight. So, sorry I had to run down the hall. So I've been there trying to get settled. I got an oldest son that's graduating early this year. So he's panicking because if he switches from Jacksonville to Northside, he's not going to get the correct credits. You know, everything that he was getting in Jacksonville and Northside because he's going to be new, he don't know nobody. And then he got counselors, that's everything that's helping him. My daughter goes to Clark Irwin. She loves her school. I don't want to swap schools. I don't want to move. Honestly, if I have to move, I will, but I don't want to pay rent and then have to move and then come up with a deposit, pay rent every month, then turn around and come up with a deposit with money I don't have. That's ridiculous. I work. I work, I got car note, other stuff, I got kids I got to take care of. So basically, it's like, y'all extended to December. The last two weeks, I've been running around with my hair cut off trying to find a place. You keep saying Sandy Run has all these apartments. That's a lie. I'm at Sandy Run all the time. If you was in Sandy Run, just randomly go through, you were, the apartments they talking about is side two and they still fixing those apartments. They've been messed up since Florence. So what apartments are you talking about? What's the addresses? I would go out there and check right now. There's nothing out there. My sister still did. I helped her move out there. So you keep saying Sandy Run. Holiday City don't accept Section Eight. I'm not trying to be on Section Eight forever, but it helped me, boost me to get my life together and then when the issue that come off, I could live like y'all, be all fancy and stuff. But I don't have that right now. So where we supposed to go? Can I come stay with y'all? I got three kids, I got two dogs, I got a dog and a cat. So when we move, I got to get rid of my dog, I got to get rid of my cat. Y'all got animals, right? So how do you feel if you separate from your animal, have to put them in a whole, completely different home? Then what? That's the dog for my son. That's his emotional support dog. So I had to get rid of my dog that's supposed to help my son. Where we going to go? Now, if y'all want to pay my rent and the deposit and stuff, I would be happy with that, but I can't pay rent and then turn around and move, Christmas coming up and everything. That's kind of ridiculous. That's like back and forth. Then if I don't pay rent, I get evicted. It's like a catch-22 there, like, stay here and then move. And then I call them all the time. The only time they come fix my stuff is when I say I'm not paying rent. I know the law. I'm trying to study real estate and stuff like that, so I know a little bit about it. But I know for certain if things is not fixed in the house, you don't have to pay rent. And I shouldn't be evicted because they don't want to come pay stuff. They don't want to come fix stuff. So, I mean, I don't know what to say.
Attorney Carter, what's that? Is the law, what is the law here concerning paying rent, as she said, not paying rent?
I haven't, I'm not versed in that area at all.
Like, you could withhold rent if the tenant, like, if the landlord is not doing what they're supposed to do. I could show you a picture of mold that been on the AC unit. I don't know if y'all been in Town Center, but it's an AC unit. You know how many times I called about that? The only time they wanted to come fix it was yesterday and I was asleep and I was like, no, I'm asleep. You have all day to come fix that, not seven o'clock in the afternoon when you want to send one of your maintenance people to come fix it. No, you're not coming in there. You only want to fix it because all this is going on. And then I was like, why are you trying to come fix stuff when we got to move?
One thing I would, that might help you guys is that start taking pictures of all the issues you have in your apartment.
And that's the thing, I take pictures. I got ducked me. One time, they even lied. Like, my AC unit, it leaks on the floor. I had to call them, almost borderline threaten them to be like, hey, my AC's leaking. Can you come fix it? You ain't going to get this rent.
Well, I'm saying, this goes beyond dealing with Tarantino and the ownership. I would, you know, give it to your leadership, your tenant leadership. That might be one of the things you probably need to do is start collecting.
Like, I pay my rent before time. I don't mind paying rent, but I'm not going to pay you rent and then have to come up in the middle and pay my deposit and then pay first of my rent. Then that money I just paid y'all rent, what I'm, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's too much for me. Like, I try, I'm, I try to go the cheap route, but I'm fair with everything, but that's too much. Like, that's too much money to be dishing out. And I got car note, kids, they want everything all the time. Like, it's too, it's too much. And my animals. I don't want to get rid of my cat. I don't get rid of my dog, but some of these apartments, you can't have them. So it's sad. My kids are sad and crying. Like, I don't want to get rid of the dog. I mean, dog, I mean, I care about dogs, but the kids do. The kids got to uproot. My daughter got to leave her whole school going the other side. And then I'm like, well, I could drive her to school, but then that'd be illegal because we don't live in a school district. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's too much. I really don't know what to do. And then I got bad anxiety because it's like, I can't focus at work because soon as I get off work, I got to go drive around and find something. He keeps saying Sandy Run. I promise you, there's nothing in Sandy Run. I'm at Sandy Run every day. My sister still did. Show, come with me and show me what apartment is open and I will go apply. There's no apartments out there besides two that's damaged that they fixing up. Their whole side one is full. My sister just moved out like three months ago. There's nothing out there. What's the listed apartments? Give me the address. I'll go, I'll go check right now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Archie Clark. Archie Clark. Archie Clark.
Archie Clark.
Archie Clark.
No, canceled. That was Stacy's son. He's not here.
He's not here. He's not here, sir. Tierra Lambert. Tierra Lambert. She's coming.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Tierra.
If you will, please give your name and address to the clerk.
Okay, my name is Tierra Lambert. I stay at two-seven-six New River Drive. All I'm hearing is about sixty-seven apartments being with a note with the Dean thing on there. That's what y'all worried about, saying sixty-seven apartments when it's way more than that. I didn't get an unsafe sign on my door. I got a letter saying I have to be out by October twenty-seventh. Well, now it's December thirty-first, which I kind of feel like it don't really make a difference. But, so, I just feel like we shouldn't have to be forced to move at all. We should just take our time, our given time, our God-given time to move. Because like everyone said, we have Halloween coming up, we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas. I have three kids, eleven-year-old boy, six-year-old girl, and almost ten-month-old boy. We have been living in a bad condition for so long. My son stays sick regardless, like, he stays sick, the infant baby stays sick. People don't come and clean nothing. People don't do nothing. I have a whole window in my apartment that's broke. The glass is literally like hanging out my door, mold in my window sill, and y'all still want us to pay our full rent? On top of that, included in our rent is renters insurance. Renters insurance. Why are we even doing that in our rent when we got to get the, ooh, where we got to go? I'm sorry. When we have to leave. I just feel like everything that y'all doing right now is going about it all entirely wrong. Y'all have homes, y'all can keep y'all pets, y'all can do whatever y'all like to do. I'm forcing to get a second job at this point. Y'all saying first of my rent, deposit and lights, y'all like a month go by slow and it don't. We just hit that too, man. It's already the twenty-first. You know what I'm saying? And I just feel like more should just be done. I feel like we should just be, I don't know. I really don't know. I don't. And it's so stressful. It makes you depressed, well, it makes me depressed thinking about my kids and where they're going to be and how they're going to look at me struggling. This is not good for me. This is not healthy for my kids. None of us. Still getting charged. I pay six-fourteen a month to live in a hellhole that y'all forcing us to be out of. Like, why are we still paying? Why? Why, why, why? I'm forced to get another job and I shouldn't have to do that at all. At all. Thirty seconds on my time left, Lord Jesus, I just started. I'm just so upset. I'm just so mad. I'm shaking, you know? And just like that man was in here, he shouldn't have said none of that because he OD'd on it, but I feel him on that, to be honest. I really do. We have a life out here. Y'all just here listening to us, but y'all get to go home and y'all little AC, y'all got everything fixed. Like, y'all not living in mold. Y'all not paying for something that's, you know what I'm saying? That's bad. We are. You have to cry to the maintenance people all the time. You have to cry to your landlord all the time just for them to fix something. One of my associates fell through my kitchen floor. That's a lawsuit right there, but she didn't do it, but she could have. They came and fixed it and guess what? It's tearing back down again. I just, I just hope, I just hope and pray that y'all just tell Tarantino to not charge us rent because I don't want to be out here, keep struggling with my kids. I don't. I'm a young mom, like, come on. I feel like it's just much more. For real. Oh, and the outreach program is first come, first served. So when y'all are defined, what y'all going to do now? Nothing?
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Cross the bridge when you get to it.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm trying.
I'm just saying, cross the bridge when you get to it. All these folks is moving. Twenty thousand here, twenty thousand there. Y'all trying to pay this little bit of stuff. When y'all get to it, y'all need to think about that right now because we don't have no time to wait for no one. Y'all want us to do so much, but y'all want to sit here and give us a time limit on money. We have to wait. Oh, funds are low. Can you give us a month to get some more money for y'all? What type of raggedy stuff is that? What is that? What is that? For real, what is that? For real. We live out here and like, I mean, y'all keep hearing about, oh, we human, and yeah, we are. But goddamn. Come on. I'm just fed up, bro.
Quick question, Ms. Lambert.
Pay all this money.
Quick question before you leave. If I could get you a repeat, how much is your rent per month?
Six-fourteen.
And what size apartment is that?
A two-bedroom and one bath.
Thanks. Owen Hills. I think it's Hills or Mills.
Yes, it's Hills.
Mr. Hills, if you will, please state your name and address to the clerk.
My name's Owen Hills. I live at one-oh-three King Street, right here in Jacksonville, North Carolina. Wowee. The tenants have already said most of the things I think that need to be said. So most importantly, I'd like to thank all the tenants who came out here for this. I do have at least one thing to say and one question to ask. The thing that I have to say here is that, and I really want anybody on G10, I don't know where to look at for the cameras, and anybody on YouTube, to understand this. We'll cross that bridge when we get there is how y'all got here. That's not good enough. Okay? Y'all made a decision. Somebody made a decision. Let me not say y'all. I don't know who made the decision. Somebody made a decision to put these people out in two months without consulting anybody. Then the decision was made to extend it till December thirty-first. Problem with that is when nobody who lived there asked about that. This is a representative body. We need to start asking the people who are affected by the decisions what works for them. I understand it's complicated, but at the end of the day, the reason people are mad is because their lives are being dictated to them. Now there's a tenant organization. There's structure. There are individuals like Felicia who can be spoken to. People have already given suggestions on what a more appropriate deadline would be. That needs to be taken seriously and some kind of compromise needs to be made that comes from a place of collaboration with the people who are affected. Not asking the people who are affected's opinion and burning that bridge when we get there is how y'all got here. And there's a lot of uncomfortable people in this room right now, I'm sure. The question that I have is, are there any plans from the city, whether it's the city council, the city attorney or the city manager? Is there a plan for after December thirty-first? Is there a plan for after the demolition? Or are we just saying eh, we'll burn that bridge when we get there? Is there a plan for any of those things? It's not a rhetorical question. I mean, the people on G ten probably want to know.
You want to speak to that Dr. Woodruff?
Yes. There is no long-term plan that the city has seen. However, we have been in discussions with the property owner and with others about how you move forward with new development. The difficulty is new development would not be in place for a minimum of two years. Whether there'll be a need to rezone some of the property to a higher density or change some of the uses that are there. It's private property. What we have done as a staff is talk to the owner of the entire ninety acres. We've also talked to at least three people who are interested in possibly buying a portion of the ninety acres. We cannot force them obviously to sell. It's gonna have to be a private, private partnership, but at this point, no, we have not seen many plans. Do we welcome plans? Absolutely. The testimony that we have heard over the last many speakers speaks to exactly the issue that we have. And that is those units are not fit to live in. While I certainly understand the dilemma of people trying to find new houses. There is no question, I don't believe anybody who lives there, maybe other than one or two people who believe that their units are acceptable. I think you will find that that entire development needs to be redeveloped. We have not seen a plan. Even as late as eleven o'clock this morning, the city attorney and I were in a conversation on the phone with a representative of the current owners, asking them, when are we going to see a redevelopment plan? The difficulty is these people are not developers. What they are is they are people who own property and they looked for a tax shelter. They did not know what they were buying. Now they know what they are buying or what they own. So the long-term, in my opinion, is going to be several years in the making. The short-term is how do we continue to assist people in moving out in a systematic way? That's why the agreement that we had this past week was December thirty-first. But again, that's not every unit that's out there. You know, we hope that some of the people who are in this sixty-seven list are going to be able to move inside town center apartments to other units that are not on the list that has to be eliminated or moved out of by December thirty-first. Uh, it is, there, I certainly don't have the ultimate solution. I'm sure that you're correct. Better communication would have helped. But at the end of the day, you know, we are taking this one step at a time, trying to be as humanistic as we possibly can and trying to find ways to assist. But as I said, the long-term plan, we are hopeful somebody is gonna come along and hopefully in a period of a series of developments, you will have quality housing replacing what each of these tenants have spoken to. Housing that is simply unfit.
Can I just say something with my last nine seconds here?
Go right ahead.
Uh, I also just want to say, I don't think any of y'all are evil. Y'all are just making bad decisions. And that's, I just want to point that out. It's all right. We'll figure it out, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Owen. Dr. Woodruff. Can we somehow maybe through
I'm sorry, would you start again?
Through Tracy, as we get resources, send that information over to Town Center or we try to figure out, uh, I'll work with the tenant association so we can actually go and hand those, or put those on the doors. If she, you know, she gets information, she can send it over.
We have been sending, a good suggestion, we have been sending over information to Sound Center. Uh, we have been asked not to put anything on the doors of the individual tenants. We've been asked to do that through the management company that's there. So all of this information, I will also say to you again that Tracy Jackson this afternoon is the one who provided you and the mayor, Mr. Carter, and Mr. uh, Massey and myself this information regarding Sandy Run Apartments.
Right. And I, I know they supposed to be getting some online and they're fixing up, I think by the end of the, end of this month that there was, but I think those are three bedrooms that they were talking about. I don't know how many more they were supposed to put online.
I'm just gonna read to you again what Ms. Jackson gave us this afternoon in our meeting. Sandy Run Apartments currently has three three-bedroom units and twelve four-bedroom units available. For the four-bedroom units, they anticipate that they will have more available on nine thirty twenty-one. So that's
That's what I was talking about, right there.
And two and three-bedroom units available on October fifteenth.
Mr. Carter, uh, William Strong, S T R O M E.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, sir.
Mr. Strong, if you would give your name and address to the clerk, please.
Uh, William Strong, nineteen oh one South Drive. Um, I actually been listening to this and coming up with some other things that I wanted to bring up. Um, good evening, council members. Um, I'm a sixty-year-old veteran, partially disabled. I was homeless for three and a half years before I was enrolled on the Section eight UBS. And that's how I ended up in, uh, Town Center. Um, I have, I have some concerns about the people, especially, and I'm, I'm really glad we come up with the December thirty-first thing, with the exception of I'm concerned about the families and the women and children. January first, January and February in our area is the worst time to put somebody out. Fifty-five degree weather, five mile an hour wind with just a little bit of damp can cause hypothermia and death in an hour. This is definitely the wrong time to be putting people out in January and February. Um, I had some other questions. There's some things that, uh, Ms. Felicia brought up. Um, why was this sprung on everybody just out of nowhere? Because nobody was given any kind of reasonable um, notice. And even now, I think you keep on bringing up the sixty-seven units. Well, I don't, I'm not sure that anybody that's involved in this sixty-seven units even knows who they are. We're not being communicated with properly. We need to know what's going on and somebody needs to reconsider some of this. Because there are a lot of people's lives at stake. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jonathan Paez. Mr. Paez, if you would give your name and address to the clerk, please, sir.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Paez. I live at two four three Eastwood Drive. Uh, my name is, um, is on that list of sixty-seven. And there are, uh, there's no communication within Town Center with, uh, to the tenants. It's, it's basically people finding out all the information from other people. Uh, I am on that list of sixty-seven. And I would also like to state that my apartment is livable. I can live in my apartment. Yes, there's a few things wrong with it, but I don't think it's at eviction status. You know what I mean? Now, I brought these two papers in just to show something, but um, we got told that we were gonna get moved out if you were adjacent to an apartment that was condemned. Some apartments are condemned like adjacent like this. And those do share the bottom, the bottom part, you know? But some apartments are connected like this and they do not share the bottom. I am one of these apartments that connects like this. And this is the apartment that is being shut down. My apartment and the apartment next to me are not being, well, we, we were gonna get kicked out on the twenty-seventh, but we found out because I decided to go to the office because I just felt uninformed. I have a thirteen-year-old daughter. She has autism. I have a stay-at-home wife. It's a decision of ours because we want to raise our family. And, um, but the reason that I mentioned that is because my wife listens to the door. Fi- it, nobody informed us that this was happening. We had to basically find out for ourselves. You're talking about twenty thousand dollars of money that we can get help from. I'm gonna go home. Help from where? Where do I sign up? Who do I call? Do I call the city council where everybody else is calling and get the runaround for the next two months? We're nine days away from the next month coming in. And I remember Ms. Washington saying that, um, yes, we're paying full rent, Ms. Washington, all sixty-seven of us, and I'm pretty sure everybody else out there and everybody in New River is paying full rent. And it's like that other girl said, it's a catch twenty-two because you're, you, they're saying you gotta move in December. And you gotta pay rent until you move, but at the same time, these low-income hu- uh, families have to save money for moving and that down payment. My daughter goes to New Bridge Middle School. As I said, she's autistic. She has a special, um, program that we developed for her on a yearly basis, just so that she can get a specialized education. I'm not gonna uproot her out of that school just because I gotta move with, with, uh, with literally no notice, you know? Um, sixty, there, there has to be more than sixty-seven apartments, but I got some notes here before my time is up. Um, everybody's uninformed. Everybody's paying full price. Nobody knows where to get this help that y'all are offering. So if nobody knows where to get help, there is no help. That's basically how it is. And that's how we feel. Um, there's no accountability on New River because it didn't get like this from yesterday to today. It, this happened over a lengthy period of time. A lengthy period of time, which I'm pretty sure city inspectors went out there and said, everything's fine. And got their paycheck. Um, yeah, if something can be done, not on, not only about our emotional status right now as Town Center, but financially. Because it's the money where it hurts the most. Because that's what we don't have. And you're asking us to, to do this and in December. Man before me said the cold. He, he knows outright. He, he was homeless. He knows the cold. And you're, you're, you're letting us, I, I, I heard you say that, um, we're trying to do this slowly. All I hear is we're trying to kick people out slowly so we don't kick people all out at the same time. It's like you're trying to create a, a homeless situation slowly, but not all at once. It, it's gonna be difficult for people to move, to find a place to go, to find resources. Town Center is not communicating with us. Finding, uh, uh, apartments, um, uprooting houses and, and families and, you know, the reason that, um, I moved out here to United States was for a better, um, uh, future for my family. I was living in Puerto Rico seven years ago and, and I, well, eight years ago, and I've been living in Town Center seven years. It was the first time that I was able to find an apartment uh, with like six hundred dollars that I had on my, in my, in my bank account. And I was able to provide a home for my family out here in the United States. I got a small job and I've been working hard. I moved up three times. I am the living American dream. I have a lot of faith in this country. But but something like this shouldn't happen. Um, I don't, I try not to get emotional, but hearing all those people's stories is hard. Out there. Cause I may not be struggling like them, but I have been. I've been there. But I worked hard and I got out of the hole and, and I'm here now. I live on two four three Eastwood Drive. I've never seen, and my wife has never seen an inspector in our house to let us know that our apartment is in a bad condition. I studied civil engineering in Puerto Rico. Has nothing to do with it in the sense that I'm not trying to brag here, but what I'm trying to say is that I can determine if my apartment is structurally sound, and it is. Not only that, I had a situation about three years ago where a repair caused some plumbing to destroy my kitchen floor and they were forced to do the underneath of our, sorry. They were forced to do the underneath of our living arrangement. Right? Nobody lives, well, some people live in these apartments that are also connected. Some of those apartments are in bad condition. You can walk around and see it, but I also do believe that those apartments, they let them get to that bad condition purposefully. You know, I don't know what the end goal was, but they let them get like that. Because after Florence, when I came back from Florence, I made tabs on everything that I saw. And if I were to just put a number out there, I saw a hundred problems and three of them got fixed. That's about it. And then after that, they just forgot about us. And then three years later, you're, you're deciding to, I mean, I think the extension because I was gonna get kicked out on the twenty-seventh without any notice. So I think the extension to thirty-first, but in reality, in the thirty-first, you show me one person that's signing leases on December twenty-first or December twenty-third or on, or on January second. I heard a suggestion to push it out to June because this would affect the kids less and the school and having to uproot them and move them. So I hope y'all consider um, amongst all your other ideas, pushing the extension at least out to June. Thank you for your time. Um, and, and I hope that you can seriously consider our petitions for consideration, empathy and economically. We need money. And if I pay rent for an apartment that's not worth it, that money should be in my pocket so that I can go ahead and move on. If, if that's what your plan is, you know? Cause that's what I hear. I'm, I'm forty years old and I understand how the world works. We're gonna get moved out. I understand from here and that here. We're gonna get moved out. I understand that. But y'all, y'all have to do more for us because like I said, in December thirty-first, nobody's signing leases. So basically you're asking us to move December fifteenth, the middle of the month. Because the last two weeks of December and the first two weeks of January, who's working? Are y'all? You know what I mean? So I know I am. Please consider it. I'm only one person here, but there's a lot of families. I have a daughter. I have a, I have a, I have a wife. And, um, at the moment, this is a lot for us. Middle of a pandemic. I don't even know if I'm gonna be able to keep my job. I work on base. I work right next to base. at the moment, this is a lot for us. Middle of a pandemic. I don't even know if I'm gonna be able to keep my job. I work on base. I work right next to base. I only have one family car. I rode bike four years in Jacksonville. I went to Walmart on bike, not a motorcycle, on bike. I did my laundry on bike so that I could save up enough money to buy one car. And I did. Like I said, I'm the living American dream right here. Can't deny it. But I don't want y'all to turn your back on us, please. Not this time. Somebody's gotta be held accountable. And you wanna really help us right away? We got nine days to next month's rent. Nine. That, that's, that's the first thing you can do to help us out. That and keep us informed. Let them know to keep us informed. I heard you say, um, that you weren't allowed to put anything on our doors. Well, if you're giving it to Town Center, they ain't pushing it forward.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure, sir.
Well, oh. Is there some way we could actually mail something to the tenants?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I also heard you suggest that, you know, if we want any legal representation or if we wanna basically have just, um, for this to be fair to us, that we have to get a lawyer. Can't even find an apartment, man. And you're asking us to get a lawyer? It's tough. It's a reality, you know? Everybody's got the COVID excuse on their head and in their tongue, on the tip of their tongue. Oh, I can't pay you more, COVID. Or our apartments are really expensive, COVID, sorry. You know, a, and everybody's just using it as an excuse. But I still gotta go to work. I still gotta pay my rent. I can't use it as an excuse. Please consider us. And thank you for your time and extending my time.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Take care.
Vanessa Bankston.
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 Hello, everyone.
Hey, Ms. Bankston. Could you please give your name and address to the clerk for the record, please?
Vanessa Bankston, twenty forty-one South Drive.
Thank you.
Um, first, I would like to say, um, I thank God for each and every one of you in here. I don't know much about politics. I don't know. But what I do know is I may live in New River, but I'm not from New River. I don't act like everyone else does. We've been in this apartment now for three years. Total, we've been in New River for twenty-eight. We was in twenty forty-two, but twenty-five. The storm had us to move where we are now. They never had to take us to court. They never had to do any of that. What I know is I grew up on Hargit. New River was a place where everybody wanted to live because it was beautiful. And now, when I see it, it look like hell. And we shouldn't have to pay for the mistakes that these people had done. Someone need to make them pay. I didn't come from junk, and I will not allow them to put me and my family in junk. My mother and father work hard. My husband and I work hard. We are human. We're not animals. These places are so full of mold. My grandmother, my grandmother was ninety years old when she passed, and she lived on a row in New River. Her kitchen floor was so rotted, my grandmother almost fell through the floor. But what did they do? They put tile over it. Now, my apartment that we're in, there's mold. And what they do, send someone out to spray Clorox. I clean every day. I know what Clorox smell like. Then you call them. They say they have someone coming. No one ever comes. But then they wanna hit everybody with late fees during COVID. Then they tell you about the home program. They get the money. What about us? I felt like I was hoodwinked. Someone need to make them pay for what they done, what they're doing to us. I've never been on HUD. I don't know nothing about HUD. I have nothing against anyone that's on HUD or whatever they call it. I've worked ever since I was sixteen years old. What's getting me now, right here and now, yes, we're angry, yes, we're upset, but you guys have really nothing. And Lord, if I'm wrong, forgive me, to do with what they've taken us through. I pray that someone in here has God on the inside, someone that cares for us people. It's not about color. It's about the state that they have us in now. I apologize for the way you guys have been talked to. I do. Because they shouldn't talk to any of you guys. I don't know, I don't know, again, nothing about politics, but all I know is I'm here to represent my family. And I pray that you guys do the right thing. I pray that someone sitting in this building under this roof have God's spirit on the inside of them and make them pay for what they're doing for the people. And you guys have a blessed night.
Hold on one second. Vanessa. No, I'm gonna work with you. That's my double second cousin.
You guys just don't know. I've never been homeless. I've never felt like, okay, now what? God has blessed me and my husband and our, with a thirteen-year-old. We had her ever since she was two, my son, and now she's thirteen. She don't know what's going on here.
We gonna figure this out.
Because this is wrong. This is so wrong.
I'm gonna help you figure this out.
And we need, I'm telling you guys, we need you guys. And I know, I know so, 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 so deep down in my heart, I know that you guys guys have to have God on the inside to know that we all belong to Him. And He said that He would never have His seed begging bread. And we all are God's people. We all live as children. And they have to pay. This will not go unnoticed because that's how the God that sit high and look low. And He sees all of it that's going on. And I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm kinda emotional, but I just had to let that out. And so
I'm gonna even get that.
I pray that you guys, whatever it is you guys can do to help each and every one of us. Because in the beginning, I was selfish. I said, Lord, help me in my household. And then I said, no, help all of us because we're in this all together, all of us in New River. It's like a family, a family being grafted in to the Lord. It's like a saint. When you give your life to God, you're grafted into His family. And so we all in this together. And so I just pray that you guys just help us do, you guys do the right thing and and that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sharice Harris. Ms. Harris, uh, lives at seventeen thirty-eight Robinson, seventeen thirty-eight Robinson Drive. Sharice Harris.
Okay, hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Sharice Harris. I live at seventeen thirty-eight Robinson Drive. Um, I am the lovely mother of two. And I am not originally from Jacksonville. I have been here for about a year. Um, in October, we'll make a year, um, that I've been living in Town Center. Um, I am one of the residents who has no complaints about my apartment. There's actually nothing wrong with my apartment. Um, I'm actually very proud of my apartment. I came from New Jersey where I had nothing. I have been homeless. I have been a homeless pregnant mother. I came here to start over and I accomplished a lot by being here and worked hard to keep everything that I have. And for some people that I don't know, I've never seen before, I don't know any of you, to tell me that I have to move out of an apartment, that nobody has actually came to inspect, nobody asked me, Sharice, are you unhappy with your living conditions? Nobody has actually came and knocked on my door. Um, when they came and started putting those little stickers around, they I, they actually would have put a sticker on my, on my door if my back door so happened to be open. They were just randomly walking around, putting stickers on. And I came to my back door and they said, oh, is apartment next to you vacant? I said, yes, you know, it is. And they put a sticker on it. But nobody actually went inside. Um, I can't lose, one of the main concerns is losing Clyde Irwin. My oldest son goes there and he loves it. He's finally this year enjoying the transition. Last year was hard. This year, he's a whole new kid and he's happy. I mean, he's genuinely happy to go to school in the morning. And now, me not being from here, I don't know where to go. I don't know what's a good environment for my son. I don't know if he's going to accept the transition or am I gonna go backwards and have to start over with his behavior, with him not learning, all because of something he nor I understand. My son loves coming home. He wanna go home right now. So for you to tell me that I'm just gonna lose, I mean, my rent is paid up until after you guys are telling us that we gotta get out. And I bust my butt to do it. And now I have to go. Go where? I don't know. Because a lot of places around here, I've heard that they went up on their rent, anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars. That's not including the application fee for each place. Um, and they also have changed their income requirements to three times what the rent is. Fortunately, I don't make three times of what any rent is. So where am I supposed to go as a single mom with two children? Thank you. Come on, Papa.
You know, one of the things I do wanna say is that when we go forward, I hope we can work on this affordable housing issue. And when I say affordable housing, I don't mean based on what the military is paying. You know, they, they, that destroys, I think, thirty-five to forty percent is service industry. And they're basing the, all, the rents on what the military gets plus the rations they get for living in a, you know, the, for housing. And it's really not fair, you know? Um, but we gotta figure this out.
Definitely, definitely have more conversations about it.
That it?
We have a, we're gonna move on now to, uh, appreciate, I appreciate all those that came out tonight.
Speak, yes. I, uh, out of all that I've heard tonight, um, I think the one thing that I think we can do right now would be to extend to the end, to the, till June, end of school. I certainly think that is the, the best thing that we could, that we could do right now. There's some other things that we need to talk about, but I, I really, I'm, I'm, um, I'm just unhappy with the fact that we're, that we think we're doing good. I know, I know the whole intent. But, but actually, I think requiring people to be out December thirty-first is not in their best interest. It's not in the city's best interest. And I would not support that. That, and, and I believe that I would only support at least through the school year. I don't know how y'all feel about it. But that's something we can do. We can, we can direct the manager and the attorney to, to at least consider that and, and make that a, a make that an agreement with Town Center. I don't think we need to be in a position of creating any homeless folks. I'm not gonna support, uh, allowing anybody to be homeless. I just, I can't support it.
Can you research that?
You could give us direction. We're starting to go back to, uh, Town Center and say that the council wants this agreement to be extended to the end of the school year, and we can figure out what that date is, and we can amend the agreement on, on these sixty-seven units. But I have to remind you as a council that this is a relationship between a landlord and their tenants. That, uh, as I've indicated to you, I believe from information given to us, that most of these folks are on a month-to-month basis. Uh, I, you know, the landlord will have to make the decision, uh, whether any of these or others that are out there, if there's other reasons, if they decide that they want to bring them to, for eviction purposes, whatever, that is their right to do under the law. Now, they can hire an attorney and they can, you know, certainly look into their legal rights. But, uh, month-to-month is a pretty short period of time where you only have to give folks thirty days' notice, as I understand it. But again, we can certainly, uh, uh, approach the, uh, and I'm sure they would not, well, I don't wanna say that. Because again, you know, they have, they had nearly seven hundred units. Over four hundred of those are now vacant. Their cash flow, and I don't know what the, you know, what their situation is, but it's been cut in more than half, is, is, is gone, clearly. So again, but we can certainly approach them and, and talk about that. But the, the, this is, uh, not just something the city can do on its own. Uh, again, to be clear to everyone, this is a relationship between a landlord and a tenant under North Carolina and, and, you know, federal laws. Uh, and that
And that's fine. I understand that. I understand that. I, I understand your position.
Uh, my position.
We, as the representatives of the people, we need to do what's best for our people. And I think going back to Town Center and saying, we're, we would like you to extend this agreement until, until, pick a date, June, whatever. It, it, it's, it's not just that. It's not just the school time. It's obviously the timing of December thirty-first is not a good time. That one gentleman is correct. There's gonna be, you know, the holidays are a terrible time to do anything. The other thing is, we know that we have an affordable housing shortage. If we extend this period of time, it allows the, those folks that are, that know they have to get out, one, it gives them a, um, a, a longer time to find something. But we know that there's gonna be some, some, um, homes available and can help absorb them. By, by making December thirty-first, we already know that we're gonna have some folks that's gonna be homeless because the market is just not out there. But if we extend the time, that market should be able to absorb those folks who are gonna be displaced. And, and, and yes, I, I know, I know you, that we can't make them. But we obviously have some influence with them. And, and regardless of what they do, we have to do what we think is best. And I think what we think is best is that we need to help these folks. And I don't, I, and I think we need to, if you have to strong-arm a little bit, I think that would be fine. But I, I'm just, I think we need to give these folks some more time.
Address a minute.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to, that'd be fine to extend.
I'll make the motion to give, um, our city attorney and our city manager um, permission to discuss with town management to, to amend the agreement from December thirty-first to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Other discussion on this matter? Very none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Let me address that whole month-to-month issue.
Yes.
In some cases, as I walked the, the area, there were people waiting for other apartments to open up. Going back to your, the reality of a shortage. There are people that have been there for ten, fifteen, twenty years that's been going month-to-month for whatever reason. So I just wanna, you know, bring that up because it's just, I think sometimes people don't realize that these folks aren't just not, you know, they have been doing this thing. It's been routine for so long, they haven't even considered doing a, you know, know, another agreement, maybe looking for something better to come along, but like it's been said, we just don't have that better to come along. So.
Let me make one comment. I want to make sure that the people who are out in the atrium understand, there is no action that this city council has taken that guarantees them any extension. What you have directed is for the city attorney and myself to inform the owner, the person who is the legal authority, that we as a city are agreeing to let this matter stay from a legal standpoint through June the thirtieth. That does not mean in any way that tomorrow morning, the units that we have listed in these sixty-seven won't get eviction notices. From whom? Not the city, but from the landlord and the landlord's attorney. I hear a person out there saying we won. No. All you received tonight was something from the city council that said, "From our standpoint, we will stand down for the next six to nine months and continue to let you live in the filth and in the decay that we know is out there." That even though we have a legal responsibility to enforce the housing code, we will stand aside. But I want to make sure everybody understands, including all of us in this room, we are not the ones who have the final say. The final say rests with the landlord and their attorney. Thank you.
Let me ask you another question, Dr. Woodruff. Are they actually working on any of those units right now?
No, sir. They have no active building permits. Now, if they are doing incidental repairs that don't require a building permit, they, meaning the property owner, we do not know that. But there are no valid permits issued for any of the units. But that again doesn't mean that floor tile is not being repaired, that electrical sockets are not being replaced. But if it requires a building permit, the city has told them, "We will not give you any building permits until you give us a full redevelopment plan."
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we have the adoption of amendments and consent items. I'll move that. As, as amended, remember, we were adding these two consent agenda items? Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That brings us to our first item here for the evening. And this is a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, amendment to Article five point two landscaping standards, landscape hardships and buffer yards for the RMH zoning district. Ryan will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As you will recall, last month, we discussed this in a workshop setting with the council. It went before the planning board last week and they recommended unanimously that this unified development ordinance text amendment be approved. Just a quick synopsis, this came up with the recent small area zoning along Preston Road area, North Marine Highway, North Marine Boulevard. Concerns were raised by some property owners. We met with them and came up with what we think is a good solution to resolve the buffer yard issues with redevelopment. In conjunction with that, we also identified an omission when we created the RMH zoning district. So the first thing that this change would do would be to create buffering standards for the newly adopted RMH zones, although we don't have any of these zones in the city limits. This would be the buffering that would be required moving forward. And then, as mentioned to you last month, creating a type C buffer, which is a ten-foot buffer with specified plantings and additional hardship cases. We would be adding six and seven, shifting the current six down, deals with narrow lots, I'm sorry, lots that are less than an acre and a half, two hundred feet in depth. And if there's existing buildings that are going to remain, that, that doesn't have to factor in the buffer if the building's going to remain with the redevelopment. Be happy to answer any questions. I know this is kind of an abbreviated discussion, but being that we had workshop session on it last month, I wanted to try to keep it very brief for you this evening. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Are there any lots along that area that, the commercial lots that are, that are not in compliance with less, are, are they, are they, let's see, any likely lot that is less? Are there, are there some lots that maybe would still be unable to comply even with the hardship? In other words, would they?
I mean, there's always a possibility, but we believe with the existing hardship cases plus the additional ones being added, that it really allows, you know, this buffer to be reduced from thirty to ten feet. With the redevelopment pattern, we looked at streets along Henderson, along Western Lejeune, we looked at all the boulevards, streets to see what was, what the depth is. We had a recent site plan that came in along Henderson Drive Extension that had about two hundred and forty feet of depth, and they could comply with the thirty-foot buffer and have a detention pond in the rear. So we believe that this is a good, a good point at it. It doesn't mean that it's going to be one hundred percent. We feel that it very likely could be, but there's always that chance, given a really, really small development site, that it may cause problems. But we have this hardship cases relates to the landscaping standards and now the buffering. We think this is a good step forward. The business owners that we talked to, they were satisfied with what we had proposed to eliminate the concerns that they addressed with council back in June, I believe it was. Yes.
What's the significance of the November ninth, two thousand eleven?
That's a great question. That was actually when John Pierce brought a text amendment before a previous council that said, you know, "Hey, you're putting in new landscaping requirements." You know, anything before these new standards, which were adopted in November of two thousand eleven, may have a hard time complying with the new standard. So that was the date that was established, and we felt like keeping it that way, because what we don't want to have happen is somebody that comes in today, splits the lot, they've created the problem for themselves. So basically, anything plotted before two thousand eleven, you are able to utilize these hardship conditions that are in the ordinance currently, and these new ones if council adopts these changes. That's a great question.
Any other questions, Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This time, we'll close the regular meeting, recess the regular meeting after the public hearing that's required in this matter. Anyone present here to speak to this matter, if so, indicate by?
No one, Mr. Mayor.
Close the public hearing on this matter. Counsel, you've been asked to consider the unified, unified development ordinance text amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion to approve the UDO text amendment found in attachment A that the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted CAMA plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number nine, it's a public hearing on unified development ordinance text amendment, amendment to Article four, use standards, section four point two, use specific standards, subsection D, commercial use standards. Jeremy Smith, be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. City staff has been working with America Real Estate Company over the last several months on agenda item number nine, which is a, an amendment to use specific standards as it relates to self-storage facilities. The current use standards were adopted as part of the UDO. They were adopted in effort to curtail the traditional appearance that the city has witnessed over the last, how many years of current self-storage facilities, which are your linear rows of buildings, bay doors on the other side, your, your old-school, traditional-style development. America Real Estate represents a future self-storage facility that kind of adopts the new style. I'm going to zip through this type of facility, which is multi-story, climate-controlled. However, our current standards restrict height, the height of many storages, to twenty-four feet. It also restricts the presentation of garage bay doors as it relates to visibility from the street. Working with the applicant, staff is proposing to amend the use specific standards by removing the height restriction from twenty-four feet and limiting it to the underlying zoning district. In this case, corridor commercial is seventy-five feet, industrial is seventy-five feet with a scaling, as you get further away from the street, you get taller. Also, that if garage bay doors are visible from the street, but their interior, meaning behind glass, they would be fine, they would not have to be screened from any views. The staff took this to the planning board at their meeting last week. They, along with the staff, are recommending approval of this change with being supported by, pardon me real quick, by the CAMA policy thirty-nine point two, I believe, and that the proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Hearing none, we'll recess the regular council meeting. At this time, open the public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak to this matter? If so, indicate. No one? We close the public hearing on this matter. Counsel, you've been asked to consider the unified text, development ordinance text amendment.
Moves at the staff recommendation that council approve the UDO text amendment found in attachment A. Proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted CAMA plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to agenda item number ten. This is unified develop, development ordinance text amendment, dealing with amendment to Article four, use standards, section four point one, the use table. Jeremy, you'll present this item?
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
As some of the city council may recall, we saw on the news recently that Hansel County was interested in the Old River of Life Building to move their senior services and senior city, or senior center. And so staff, with that in mind, looked at the current UDO and found that senior center in the corridor commercial zoning district, which the Old River of Life site is zoned, is a special use permit. However, it's permitted outright in office and institutional and neighborhood commercial. We believe that's an inconsistency with the UDO, that senior center should be permitted outright in the CC district to keep that process, that review, efficient in its manner as it would be a staff approval. I know that the county may not be pursuing that site anymore, but we still support this amendment, this change, by adding senior center as a permitted use in the corridor commercial zoning district. With that said, staff took this to the planning advisory board at their meeting last week and are recommending approval that is afforded by the CAMA plan and is reasonable and in the public interest. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recess the regular council meeting, open the public hearing this matter. Anyone present wish to speak to this matter? Hearing no one, close the public hearing. Counsel, you've been asked to consider the unified development text ordinance amendment.
Mayor Phillips, I make the recommendation that council approves the UDO text amendment found in attachment A, with the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted CAMA plan and is reasonable and is in the public's interest.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Brings us to agenda item number eleven. This is a public hearing for legislative map amendment, rezoning of parcels along Preston Boulevard, Preston Road, North Marine Boulevard and Sophia Drive. Jeremy's going to present this item.
One more time.
One more time.
This tags along with Ryan's amendment, agenda item eight. If you recall, the board looked at this area at June, at its June meeting, and at that time, we actually rezoned six parcels in this area. And now it's the remaining sixty-eight parcels that I'm bringing back and forth to you. This is an overall aerial of the, overall aerial of the area in question. This is the central area, which the, the rezoned properties there north on Richlands Avenue are still highlighted. Those were rezoned, along with a parcel on Preston Road that night. This is the northeastern area, which takes up the Jacksonville Multimodal Center and one area I wanted to highlight is a portion of the city's bike trail that shows up in gray. It's identified as right-of-way as far as our centerline mapping. However, it is a parcel of property. And because we were rezoning a portion of it to industrial, that mean we meant, we had to notify everybody who abuts that tract of property that extends from Marine Boulevard all the way to Lejeune Boulevard. Has no effect on those properties along Belle Fort Road, Cavanaugh's Drive, Brannister Drive, any other properties along there, because we're only looking at this portion along North Marine. I just wanted to add that information to you in case any of your citizens contact you about what they got that notice for. This is the southwest area, which takes up the Circle K down to the city's utility site along North Marine Boulevard. Current zoning of the area we're looking at, notice the lone orange parcel there, being proposed or currently zoned residential multifamily low-density. That was the one parcel we rezoned back in June. These are the properties along Sophia Drive and North Marine, as they currently zoned corridor commercial and neighborhood commercial. Those neighborhood commercial properties along Sophia Drive back up to the bike, bicycle shop and furniture fair. These are properties to the southwest zone industrial. Again, these are the McDonald's, the Circle K extending down to Courts Plus and the city's utility site. This is the CAMA plan, the central area, CAMA for the northwestern area, and CAMA for the southwestern area. In, in its majority, the CAMA plan supports this rezoning, but there are areas that are not. So when I read the recommendation tonight, that will be identified. Proposed rezoning, this is what it would look like. The properties along Preston Road would change to residential multifamily low-density. Those five parcels closest to Highway seventeen would go to corridor commercial. Those are all owned by Mr. Bill Terrell. The Board of Realtors property there at, on Preston Road is the purple, that's, would be changed to office and institutional. The properties in the northeastern area, all along Marine Boulevard, would change to industrial, while those along Sophia Drive, the single-family homes, and I believe there's a duplex or two, would be rezoned to residential multifamily low-density, while the properties over on Cox Avenue and Zack Circle would go to corridor commercial. The properties in the southwestern area, southwestern area, extending down from the McDonald's, the Circle K, Courts Plus, down through the city, city utility site, would be zoned corridor commercial. This is the overall map of the proposed rezoning. Again, the planning board reviewed this back in June of this year, I believe, oh, I'm sorry, yes, um, yes, June fourteenth, the planning board recommended approval at the time of this rezoning area. I brought it to the board, June twenty-second, we've rezoned those six parcels. This is the remainder tonight of those last sixty-eight parcels. City staff is recommending approval, along with the planning advisory board, that this rezoning request is found in the affirmative, which finds effect A through J, being found in affirmative, and direct the city staff to update the CAMA future land use map, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by correcting several non-conformities and creating more development opportunities. I will be happy to answer any questions. I did answer, we had about half a dozen folks come out because they got those notices, but I was able to discuss with them and let them know this was not impacting their properties, and they were all from the Belle Fort Road area. Thank you.
Jeremy, let me ask you, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at Marcus Street and Lloyd Street.
Yes, sir.
Is there, can you tell me anything that's over there now? Because I'm trying to get.
So I'll back it up to the aerial, because that will probably be the most help.
Right.
You know, the city, of course, is building our new multimodal center right now on, on Marine Boulevard. Waste management, had a facility there, I think they're still operating there, dumpsters,
Is that the street that's coming from the back into the multi?
Yeah, we have, it used to be Panache right over here, Panache, the wedding venue.
Right, I know what you're talking about now.
This is a concrete plant.
Yeah.
This is the- This is the.
Jeremy, I'm familiar now. I just had to get my bearings. All right, thank you.
You're crossing the Red Bull tracks.
Any other questions, Jeremy?
Thank you.
So we're going to recess the regular council and open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone present wishes to speak? No one present? We're going to close the public hearing on this matter. Counsel, you being asked to consider the proposed request, that change.
Make a motion that we approve the zoning request, accepting the evaluation found within the staff report based on findings of facts A through J being found in affirmative. And I also ask that we have staff update the CAMA future land use map. The rezoning advances the public interest by correcting conforming use and creating more development opportunities.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to agenda item number twelve. Mr. Carter's going to be presenting this about the resolution approving the execution of a memorandum of agreement for the settlement of the opioid litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In December of two thousand seventeen, I stood before you and we discussed and talked about the opioid crisis that we all know not only exist here in Jacksonville and Onslow County, but throughout the nation. It was at that time that you, as a council, passed a resolution that says that the Jacksonville City Council is declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance that must be abated for the benefit of Jacksonville, North Carolina, and its residents and its citizens. In addition to doing that, you also agreed at that time that we, as a city, should join a consortium of lawyers. At that time, it was called the McHugh Fuller Law Group, P L L C, but it's really a consortium of lawyers throughout the nation. And these next two gentlemen lawyers who are going to speak to you are going to talk to you about an M O A. Before I introduce them, I want to tell you that the county commissioner considered the M O A last evening, and they passed it. We clearly recommend, from my perspective and the manager's perspective, and from the chief's perspective, that you also pass this M O A. I would also want you to know that Brett DeSelm's and I have been what I call lockstep on this. Whenever we've taken one step, he and I have always talked. We have done that together. Now, let me introduce the presenters to you this evening. The first one is really not a stranger to Jacksonville because he's a native of Jacksonville. And that's Mr. Charles Ellis, a member of the law firm Warden Smith. Charles is here, and I think he'll maybe speak first. But also, he brought someone, a lawyer from the mountains up in Asheville, and Harold Segal is here for that. Harold has played a pivotal role in this. He has been on the many Zoom calls that we've had in reference to this. And I think in a moment, you'll see, as I listened to the county presentation last night, this is the largest civil action ever filed in the United States of America. And I'm going to let these gentlemen take over now and tell you more.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Charles Ellis, glad to be here and glad to see familiar faces back in Jacksonville. Harold and I represent part of the group that represents several of the local governments in North Carolina as part of the national lawsuit. And we've been asked to provide a brief update tonight as to the status of that opioid litigation and the pending settlement. And we're pleased to do that. The settlement is a partial settlement. It involves four defendants, only four defendants, three of whom are the distributors, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson. The fourth defendant is Johnson and Johnson. That partial settlement calls for those joint defendants to provide, to pay twenty-six billion dollars nationwide. That money is then, the twenty-six billion dollars is then distributed based upon a formula that is comprised of several variables. The main three variables are the number of opioid purchases in a particular jurisdiction, state, the number of opioid disorder diagnoses in that particular jurisdiction, the number of opioid deaths in that jurisdiction. That formula has been comprised with all of the parties, the national litigation, to determine how much goes to each state in the country. North Carolina is going, a share of that, based upon that formula, is seven hundred, approximately seven hundred and sixty-four million. Don't know the exact numbers because there's some variables as far as some municipalities, some counties, some states may elect not to join the resolution, in which case the number would go down. If they all join, it could go up. But that seven hundred and sixty-four million projected to come to North Carolina, how is that distributed once it gets to North Carolina? The same formula, the same criteria, the same three criteria are used to determine how that money gets allocated between all counties, every single county in North Carolina, and every single municipality in North Carolina for purposes of dealing with the opioid problem and abatement, providing for abatement funds. The M O A that you've got before you, and what Mr. Carter has asked you and Dr. Woodruff to approve, we fully agree with that, and we recommend that it be approved, is the vehicle by which this, these proceeds are distributed in North Carolina. So that M O A is the North Carolina memorandum of agreement. We like it because it maximizes the amount going to the counties and the municipalities for abating. By that, I mean fifteen percent of the money coming into North Carolina goes to the state, controlled by the Attorney General in the state. Eighty percent goes to counties and municipalities. There's additional five percent to get to the eighty-five percent that is payable to all the counties that sign the settlement agreement, which is going to be signed December, I mean, January second of two thousand twenty-two, and to those municipalities who have a population of thirty thousand or more, who's signed by October first. So that's why, that's why the critical date for that M O A for municipalities like Jacksonville, which has over thirty thousand residents, is October one, so that Jacksonville can participate in the five percent bonus pool. So we recommend that you, we recommend that you sign it, that you approve the resolution and authorize Mayor Phillips to sign the M O A on behalf of the city. And we have, we've worked with John in formulating that resolution. It's one that's a template that's used. So it's not unlike the resolutions that are being signed by other North Carolina municipalities who have a population of over thirty thousand. And that deadline is October, is October first. The amount of money that would come in to each municipality based on the M O A is also dependent upon how many counties agree, how many municipalities sign on by October first. The more that do, the greater amount of, that's going to be available for the counties and the municipalities. So it's not, there's nothing, the number is not certain right now. It's a work in progress, but we can give you estimations as to what the range would be just from these settling defendants. Each Onslow County's range, we talked about this last night when the county approved the M O A and the settlement agreement, actually, is that Onslow will, the county will get between ten and a half and twelve million as front-end loaded, but payable over a period of time, eighteen years. The city of Jacksonville is going to get somewhere between six fifty, six hundred and fifty thousand and a million, front-end loaded, over eighteen years. And every municipality in the Onslow County will also receive abatement money. That's the quick and skinny. I don't want to take up more time than is necessary to give you the overview. If any of you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to, Harold and I will be more than happy to try to answer those questions for you now. Are there any questions?
Questions?
What was the other litigation? You said this is one part of.
Yeah, well, there's several defendants, Mr. Thomas. And this was just for the defendants. It's four of them settling out. And this is all, it's multi-district litigation. It's a judge in a court, which is situated in Ohio, is controlling all of the discovery and the national, this particular part of the settlement. So it's a nationwide settlement, which is helpful to streamline the negotiations with particular defendants. These are just happen to be the four defendants that have agreed at this point to settle. And the clients and the lawyers and the team feel like it's in the best interest of the clients to do so because of the amount paid, the ability to use it for abatement. And they also, to avoid, you know, we have their issues of some of the companies are filing, are threatening to file bankruptcy. So it's, it's in the best interest of, we believe, everyone. So, but the remaining defendants are not settling yet. They probably, there will be some negotiations about that. But that's not part of this, what we're talking about. Now, the M O A that you're signing today is probably going to be the template for how the money that comes into North Carolina, any future money with settlements, will be distributed. So, because it's a good, it's a really good document. And the Department of Justice in North Carolina prepared this in conjunction with the N C A C C, North Carolina Associated County Commissioners, and with input from interested parties. And it's a great, it really is good. The reason we like it is because the heart of the money goes to counties and cities, which is huge.
Could you also explain to the council how this money, when it comes to the city, can be utilized? I think that's important for the council to understand.
And, Dr., that's a great question. The M O A, and you have a copy of the M O A, provides the guidelines for that. It's got to be used for opioid abatement. But, and I, we could spend an hour going over the, because it's detailed. But we believe it's going to be, the enforcement would be from the state, and we believe it will be liberally construed so as to allow the individual counties and municipalities to do what they need to do with the money, as long as it is towards some type of opioid abatement. And I'll tell you, the Cooties County, we said this last night, the city of Jacksonville and Onslow County were out in front of this. And you, I'm glad John mentioned the back, the resolution that you passed and what you did, because Onslow County and the city of Jacksonville were one of the first to litigate, to initiate litigation. And as a result of them jumping out there and doing that, other counties and municipalities fell in line. We wouldn't be here today if the vast majority of the local governments didn't fall in line. And so took courage to do that, foresight. Kudos to you all and the leadership, Dr. Woodruff, John Carter. Well, I'm going to talk about Chief Yonero because that's fascinating. Chief Yonero is awesome. Phase two, once we got the litigation undertaken and we were then looking at the judge's ordering settlement negotiation to take place, there had to be some way, some method by which to gauge what the damages were that would be awarded in the event of a successful verdict. And so the judge ordered that all of the municipalities and the local governments provide information about their damages. And first of all, Onslow County was awesome. The best, and my staff and my office handled that information and worked with Brett DeSelm's at Onslow County. Jacksonville was awesome, worked with John and worked with Dr. Woodruff and the staff. But Chief Yonero's information on the law enforcement was like, on the costs, the law enforcement cost for the city of Jacksonville was phenomenal. It was really good. My paralegal said that it was the best. Onslow County and Jacksonville were by far and away, and I said this last night to Onslow, the two best of all of them, we dealt with a number, several municipalities and counties. So another, another credit to you all, which actually made our job easier because of that organization, the timeliness, the responsiveness, and the substance that you all provided in terms of that information on damages that we had to have supplied to the court to respond to their request for damages information on the plaintiff's fact sheets is what they were calling it. John knows so well. But anyway, thank you to Chief Yonero for what you did before this lawsuit was filed to get us to where we were able to streamline that information. Does that answer you, Dr. Woodruff? I'm sorry, did it? Yep. John? Any other questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Charles. You presented that to us. Do you have anything else to add there?
No, sir. We would, we would ask the council to adopt the resolution approving the execution of the M O A for distribution and administration of settlement funds from an anticipated partial settlement of the opioid litigation.
So moved. So moved.
Second motion in second. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much for that presentation. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
So we're going to come to the report section of the meeting. We've been here for two hours and forty-eight minutes. I think we can tough it out another few minutes. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure we can tough it out a few more minutes. As far as reports are concerned, I was going to, I had some discussions with Councilmember Warden that started with, started with me. And I think we both would like to see a citizen committee formed, you know, to study future parks and recreation needs here in Jacksonville. The duties of this committee would be to receive citizen input on the future of recreation and parks. I mean, this is just me speaking here. And, you know, I'm thinking, you know, a citizen committee, well, we already have a citizen committee. It's called the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I think that they're in a good position to be able to do this by having a series of meetings with different community partners and citizens alike to gather information and to report back to the city council, directly to the city council, what they find and let us, you know, go from there with the information they provide. That's my viewpoint on it. I'll turn to you and see if you wanted to add anything or subtract anything.
How many people are on that, are on the Parks and Recreation Committee? Do you know?
Nine.
Nine. I'm concerned that when they bring in partners, that it might become a little unwieldy. You know, I would rather, I would rather have perhaps a couple of council folks, a couple of Parks and Rec people, get together and then add whatever partners they, as a group, think is good. I just, I'm just afraid that the numbers of that group at nine, by the time you add the partners, whoever they may be, county, tourism, economic development, you know, whoever, Onslow County Board of Education, whatever the partners may be, just may be a little unwieldy. But not a bad idea.
Well, you know, even though it sounds good, I just would have a, I have a hard time leaving the Recreation Board out of it. I mean, that's.
I don't, I don't want to leave them out. I agree with you. And I, but I, you know, maybe, maybe ask them to appoint two of their, two of their members or whatever to sit on the board with, with two council members to begin the discussions and then add, let that group go where they will.
Okay. That's a little solution.
Mayor, what do you, I missed the composition of that, that board. What were you thinking?
Well, I've just, it needs to be, it needs to be city-driven, regardless of who we add as partners, in my opinion. Just, again, just my opinion. But I think that, I think we do have a Parks and Recreation Board. I think the mayor's idea is good that we need to get them involved. But I'd, I'd like to see, maybe let them pick two or three, whatever, whatever we think's a good number, to meet with two or three city council folks to begin the discussions and then look at, and just talk about, you know, what do we want to do? And if we do this, who can we get to join us in this partnership? And obviously, the partnership would be, would be funding as well as, you know, helping provide guidance and whatever else assistance we might need.
Well, I'll offer myself up as a possible, you know, person to sit on that committee.
And definitely from Parks and Rec, as a liaison.
You, how do you, how do you feel about two or three Parks and Rec? Do you, how do you, how do you feel about two or three Parks and Rec, excuse me, losing my voice, two or three Parks and Rec folks? Do you want two, or do you want three? City council, would you prefer two or three? What do you think's a good number?
I think we do three city councils, three Parks and Rec, and then if we do, to fill the nine, and then you could do three partnerships.
We have a volunteer.
Do what?
We have a volunteer.
I mean, I am very passionate about the Parks and Rec, and I think, you know, what we can do going forward would be very good, so I'll throw my name in the hat as well.
I, I personally, I personally like the mayor being involved. I think it needs to, we need to have it city-driven, and I think that would be, in my mind, get him on board with whatever is being discussed, we'll, we'll go to, will help facilitate the whole discussion process, in my opinion, but I, I don't know if you want to make a motion, three, three council, three, three Parks and Rec board? I'll, I'll make that motion.
Three outside? Not right now.
That's where we're just going with that for right now.
I'm not opposed, I just, it's kind of new to me, I just didn't quite get, I mean, we've had, you know, studies, we've had our Parks Department do plans, I mean, I'm not sure where, where this is supposed to take us exactly.
We do have a master plan.
We've got a master plan, we've got, you know, we've got ideas of our own, I, I mean, I understand the, the value of potential partnerships, but it's, it's.
We're dealing with a greater issue now, though.
Right, right. I mean, it's just, like I said, I'm not unopposed, I'm just unclear about the, where we're going with it and that kind of thing, you know? So.
Well, perhaps this would be better discussed in a workshop setting, you know, I think this will get us going in the right direction, and maybe we can discuss it a little more fuller in a workshop, if that's agreeable with everybody.
If, if we'll agree at the next, it'd be the October 17th or whatever that meeting, I would, I would be agreeable to that. I just, I just know it's going to take time to get it off the ground, and it's, it's going to be slow, so.
Well, I mean, right now, we're not in any pinch to move at work speed either, so.
We're not in a pinch.
But agreeable with everybody?
Yes. Yes.
Let's see, I did a, I did a public safe, a public service announcement on the shot the other day. I don't know if they've, have they aired that yet?
I haven't seen it, but thank you for, thank you for doing that.
What was that, now? You actually did it?
About getting the vaccination.
Okay. Ready for prime time?
I don't know if they've released it yet or not.
Mayor, we had to get your Actors Guild approval.
Forgot about the unit. Okay, that's all.
That's too funny.
Oh, we have aired it.
We're editing it.
Editing it now. Yeah, okay. It needed, it needed quite a bit of editing, so I'm sure it probably kept them busy for a while.
More, more Photoshoping than editing, I think.
Probably so. All right, well, I guess that's the only thing I have to report that I can think of right now. Just one.
I would just like to say that I think in all of my years that I have served on the city council, I will probably say this was probably the most intense that I have seen the citizens in Jacksonville really come from a place of their passion. And oftentimes, we talk about standing up for our citizens. Oftentimes, we talk about being empathetic, being compassionate. Every city council meeting that we have, Mr. Carter has been a very good steward to lead us oftentimes in prayer. And tonight was a wonderful demonstration, because I'm not preaching religion, but I can't help but to think about when Jesus talks about, "When you have done it unto the least of these, you have done it unto me." But Jesus never gave us instructions or who the least of these were. He did tell us we will always have the poor. He did tell us that we will always have the widows, and it is our responsibility to take care of them. And if tonight is any indication of what the least of these are in Jacksonville, we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and do the due diligence that the city of citizens has elected us to do, because in addition to that, when we took our oath of office and put our hand on that Bible and stood by that word to swear and affirm that we were going to uphold our oath with the statutes in the state of North Carolina, this was that example that challenged us tonight. I will have to admit that in my years that I have gone to the National League of Cities and I have sat with colleagues from other cities and just listened about some of the things that's going on in their cities, and just having to take a step back and just thank God that, wow, I'm just so glad that Jacksonville is just not dealing with what is going on in some of the areas. But nevertheless, Town Center is now our moment. So if nothing more, I am proud of our leadership with our city manager and our city attorney, who has done a yeoman's job along with their staff to ensure that those citizens, that their livelihoods are not in jeopardy. But at the same time, I am proud of my city council that in the worst of a situation, how do we make it the best? And oftentimes, I think about, you know, we are just so blessed, we are just so blessed to be able to live a lifestyle in which probably housing is the least of our worries. But unfortunately, we have some citizens in which their housing is their worry. And I just wonder, you know, and Dr. Woodruff and Mr. Carter, I'm not directing this at you, but I just wonder, you know, if this was a situation similar that happened in Aldersgate or Williamsburg Plantation, you know, would it be the same outcome? I don't know. But what I do know is that I think each of our council members for at least saying that if we can't change the hearts and the minds of Town Center, at least those residents knew before they left this ground that at least we did try to do something in their best interests to make their night's sleep just a little bit more peaceful.
Amen. Amen.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I'd like to echo some of what she said, or a lot of what she said. It was definitely the, one of the most memorable meetings we've ever had, the most emotion I've seen, and, and unfortunately, we're just in a spot where we are the point of focus. I mean, we are the council that have the duty to enforce the, the statutes that are required for minimum housing, and there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and I, I want to commend Richard and John for taking the heat, I mean, doing what they, what they know is right to get the job done. It's, like they said, it didn't start yesterday, it didn't start a year ago, it's been going on and on, and unfortunately, to, when you make an omelet, you break some eggs. It's, it's tough. I mean, I, the, the passion there, the, I mean, I definitely have compassion there. We've never been tasked with saying that you're going to put somebody in the street. That's not, obviously not what we're here for, but we are here to make things better for everyone, including those people, even though it's misperceived, our efforts, I believe. I stand with the staff. It's unfortunate the situation got to where it is. The challenge is, seems nearly insurmountable. I mean, talking about affordable housing in this day and age, I mean, is, is almost a contradiction in terms with what has happened to housing, the cost of materials, the cost of everything going up. It's, in a way, it's, it's just so difficult, you know? We are up here, and so many of us are blessed. I mean, the, the city is a wonderful city. We've got a, a fantastic population, a great environment for law enforcement, safety, appearance, improvements, a lot of opportunity, but obviously, there's, there's, there's always room for improvement. What we can do is limited, very limited. We can just only, we, we can't, we're not a dictator. We can't go down there and tell these people, they give these people money, we don't have that kind of power nor would we want it. As I mentioned, it, it was definitely an emotional night tonight. I know that it was a lot, the people, I can hardly relate to the uncertainty they face, but they should understand that we want the best. I mean, we want the best for everyone, and we, you just can't, you can't make things perfect. There's no magic wand. We can, we can do what we can do. It, it almost makes you, makes me a little bit embarrassed that what we can do, you know, we hear we're talking about recreation, we're talking about spending, you know, this kind of money for that, and there's, there's so many other needs out there that, you know, we could conceivably address, but we don't really have a vehicle for it at this point. I certainly am hopeful, but again, I don't see the, I don't see the path. I mean, when you've got an outside private owner, all you have is the codes, all you have is the regulations, that's what you can do. You know, you can coerce, strong-arm, whatever you want to call it, but at the end of the day, it's, it's their property, and, and, you know, I'm hoping there's a solution, something that can be a stopgap, but it's, it's a long time, a long time coming before there's a solution to this, this issue. It's been 50, 60 years in the making. Again, I applaud the staff for what they've done, and, and back them. Appreciate, appreciate everything. And I'm glad to be here, too. Glad to be here. It's, it's tough.
Oh, I'm sorry. So silent. Look over our signal on message, that's where it always sits.
No, I just, all I have to really say, I know all the people that spoke, spoke out of, you know, from the heart, and I hate to see that and hate to hear that, and when I got into this a few months ago, I never thought I'd be sitting here having to, you know, listen to, you know, where people can be, and I know it's tough. I've never personally been there, but, you know, it's hard to hear that, it's hard to see the kids, you know, they get affected by that, they have no say, so they probably don't even know what's going on. And, you know, having a young child, and, you know, I, I'm glad he doesn't have that, but it's, we've got to do something better to help other kids and help, you know, all the citizens of the area to, so they can send their kids to good schools, so they can, you know, live in good housing, and so they don't have to, you know, fear where they're going to sleep and where they're going to be the next day. So, I know it's a tough situation, I know you all have done a good job, I know you all have been in a, a real hard spot with everything, and at the end of the day, like the rest of the council said, it's not ultimately our, I know our decision-making, but it's something we need to strive to hopefully prevent in the future. So, thank you.
First of all, I'm proud for what we did tonight, the decision we made, even though it's going to be up to Town Center as we go forth. I walked amongst that community, you know? Like I said, I have family, I've known people over the years that's grown up and have gone all over the world at this point, and just, like Dr. Washington had said, and Councilman Sosa had said, it's like to actually be at this point that we're seeing that in Jacksonville, you know? And that, that's heavy to me. That's heavy. But I also would reach out to the rest of our community to put their arms around these folks in whatever way we can do it, to try to ease their burden. It's time for us to be one city, like we've never been before. Thank you.
On a positive note, I took great pleasure in hearing the comments of the attorneys representing the settlement of the opioid litigation, or at least a partial settlement. Pleasure knowing that our staff, Mr. Carter, Mr. Woodruff, and I don't see the chief here, but for taking the leadership, as they said, the leadership in the state in advancing our interest in this litigation, and somewhere along the line, I'm sure we'll be talking about what do we do with the proceeds from that litigation, but again, so reassuring to see kudos given to the staff and to the city, to the chief of police for providing the data that supported this resolution and its outcome.
Dr. Woodruff? Given the hour, I will pass my 20-minute presentation on to the city attorney. Thank you all for what you've done tonight, and look forward to another good day. I want to invite everybody back tomorrow night. It'll be our fourth meeting, the redistricting committee, we meet at 5:30. Dr. Washington has been at two of our meetings, Mr. Bittner has been at one of our meetings, and we would love to have any of you come and, and be there. The attendance has been sparse to nonexistence, other than the committee members, and we are, again, the, the committee is working together in an exceptional way, and we have walked through at least three scenarios for them to consider and have public input on, and I think it's whatever that Wednesday is, the first Wednesday in October.
The sixth.
The sixth.
October the sixth.
The, between wards one and four, we've already talked about, tomorrow night, we're going to be specifically, unless they want to go back to wards one and four, we're going to be talking about how to deal with the imbalance between wards two and three, and there's a couple thousand people there. But again, you're certainly welcome, and we encourage you to be with us on watches on G10, or many of the social media outlets that we have that I didn't know about until I started this committee group, and, and so forth. But thank you, Eric, counsel, we appreciate all your comments, and we always work together to do the common good, and our, we've done that tonight. Thank you.
Is that, I'm doing a second, so we have a one-city moment tonight?
I think we will pass on the one-city moment.
Motion to adjourn. Can I get a second for Mr. Woodruff?
One second.
They actually voted a favor over tonight.
I'll have a second, five, a sena.